Call this meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation. Anybody here for the Wild Wild West rodeo, please join me at the podium. Whereas the Southwest Horsemen's Association and Pete Carr's Classic Pro Rodeo will be presenting the first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo in Silver City, New Mexico. And whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is celebrating its 25th year in Grant County in 2015. And whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo reflects the western heritage and history of Silver City. And whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is an important step in the process of improving the economic viability of New Mexico in the sporting world. Now therefore, I'm Michael Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. In view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim the week of May 30th through June 6th, 2015 as the first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week and urge all citizens to attend and enjoy the rodeo. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I just want to thank the, on behalf of Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo and the Southwest Horsemen's, I want to thank the Town of Silver City for their ongoing support of our rodeo and we are a volunteer organization. We couldn't exist without the support of the Town of the Silver City and the, our local community sponsors and businesses and individuals alike. And we'd like to thank you for that support.
Next item on the agenda is a public input. I'll remind everybody that you have five minutes. I'll try to give you a little bit of a warning within one minute of that timeframe. There's a couple people who are, or at least one person, two people that have been listed for the public hearing. I will ask that you wait and sign up because we cannot hear anything in regards to that ex parte. We'll start with Pete Rankin for subject matter, energy and PNM.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council members for the opportunity to speak. We have a long history in this country of change coming from below and that's what I'm speaking about today. I moved to New Mexico when I was 13 in 1987. I resided on or near the Colorado Plateau for much of that time in Farmington, New Mexico. Went to college in Durango, Colorado and after that I went to grad school in Albuquerque, New Mexico. My parents still reside in Farmington. I'm going to begin and I, speaking about my mother. She has a respiratory ailment that plagues her greatly and it's due to burning coal for energy. And you're going to hear today about the PNM's plan to provide energy to New Mexico. And if PNM chooses to partner in a sustainable way, then I welcome that. I think they could be very strong allies in our efforts to chart a more sustainable path, to change our path. I wear two hats today. One is as a hunter and fisherman and the other is as an educator and a father. As a hunter and fisherman, I grew up through my teens bow hunting in a region where much coal is mined on the Colorado Plateau. And I watched the tremendous effects of mining coal in that way and the disappearing wildlife habitat that go along with that. As a fisherman, my daughter's getting to the age where she loves to fish and we have to have conversations about the statistics or the warning that appears in the proclamation regarding mercury levels in water. And these are hidden costs that go along with producing power with coal and they're not often spoken about. But I feel as a hunter and fisherman and as a father that they need to be addressed. Turning, in my other hat as an educator, I've taught in public schools in New Mexico in social studies for 15 years. And we cover those hidden costs in my class. I teach economics and how important it is to tell the truth about how we get our power and how we arrange our economy. I passed out previous to the meeting to each of you, an article regarding a community Burlington, Vermont, who chose a different path. And they are now reaping tremendous financial rewards as a result of that and they are empowering themselves. And so as an educator, one of the most difficult conversations I have with students who have a difficult time getting jobs and they leave. They leave our communities in New Mexico. And so the question becomes, how do we keep them here? And I feel like turning the problem into the solution, how we get energy, the solution is that sun right behind the mayor. Solar energy, wind energy. On page 16 of this article speaks of the multiplier effect. Where we can recapture the money that currently throws away to investors outside of our communities. So I don't want to take up too much time today. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. But I would encourage our community to follow suit with Santa Fe and Albuquerque and reject this, or pass a resolution in opposition to this plan. And then ask PNM to go back to the drawing board and increase the amount of energy that comes from wind or solar and increase the number of jobs that stay in our community so we can keep these strong young people close to home. Where I believe they can be of the greatest benefit to New Mexico and to the world. So, thank you very much.
Next is Andy Payne for Energy Generation.
Yes, well, my name is Andy Payne. I live just outside the city of New Mexico in Silver City. And first of all, I'd like to say I agree with everything the previous speaker said about the green jobs, healthy communities. And I think that's the most important thing that we can think, thinking about when talking about generating power. And I don't know what the report is going to be tonight, exactly what the speaker's going to say about PNM's proposal. But I just want to read a short statement. I would urge you to look at PNM's power replacement proposal and Mr. Darnell's comments about it today just as critically as you would if you were buying a used car. Because that's what I feel PNM is trying to do. Sell us an old polluting jalopy when there are better vehicles available now that are a much wider investment for us. So be critical, ask questions and get other opinions. Why be so critical? Because PNM has not been forthcoming with important facts about their proposal. As examples, there were hundreds of millions of dollars of errors in their cost estimates in their first proposal. And these only came, became visible when some independent researchers made huge efforts to get that information. And when they finally got access to PNM's data and their computer model, they found all these errors. Another example, there are other power replacement proposals out there that are cheaper and cleaner. Number three, coal burning plants are a failing technology that most utilities are walking away from today, but not PNM. Their proposal would have us ratepayers pay for coal shares to run San Juan that no other utility wants to buy. I've even heard it said, people, they can't even give them away, but PNM wants us to pay for them. Some would characterize this as selling us ratepayers toxic assets, just like the banks did in the banking crisis. In previous testimony on this subject, I've heard some people call PNM's proposal a good faith step in the right direction. But we need much more than a good faith steps in the right direction with a little bit more solar that they're proposing. When your house is on fire, you don't take some incremental steps in the right direction to put it out. Like hit it with a few buckets of water today and then maybe come back tomorrow and maybe hit a few more buckets tomorrow. And the crisis that we have now demands rapid changes, huge rapid changes in our power generation. Not the same old polluting jalopy that's been letting us down for years. Thank you.
The next three were all listed as the Pro Rodeo proclamation. Did any of you want to speak? Kim Clark, Paul Wilkerson, Deborah James?
And I'm not talking about the rodeo, okay? My name is Deborah. I have lived in Silver City for 26 years and am retired educator here. I spent the last year in 2014 walking across the United States with 35 people to unite people on concerns about climate change. I served for the final years of the Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement Citizens Advisory Committee preceding the formation of the Office of Sustainability. I know that we all share concerns for Silver City's climate future. I share with you now my impressions about the opportunity we have here to co-create a more resilient, prepared community as we replace our current power profile. It's my hope that our counselors have availed themselves of the information on the program called Strategist, which was just mentioned by Mr. Payne, that PNM used to inform their replacement power plan. You're probably all aware that New Energy Economy out of Santa Fe has represented ratepayers in PNM's request for approval of their plan. In this process, New Energy Economy, whom I will now refer to as NEE, leased the same program in an attempt to bring transparency to PNM's plan. NEE's research revealed that the plan PNM chose to forward, which is heavy on coal and nuclear and gas, is not the least cost-effective plan recommended by the program. Instead, when NEE ran the numbers, four replacement portfolios cost less and each of those four offered alternatives would help New Mexico make attainable the goal of reaching 50% renewable energy by 2020. The figure that 97% of the world's climate scientists tell us is mandatory for a survivable and thrivable future. We have a narrow window of about 8.5 years left remaining, which we can realistically begin reaching this goal before we hit a point of no return with our carbon emissions. New Mexico is currently faced with a huge opportunity to get off the old expensive technology and move to cleaner, cheaper energy sources that create new jobs for New Mexicans. It's by deep hope that each of you, as counselors, ask Mr. Darnell the right questions and consider carefully what energy future you want to help create for your constituents. There is plenty of information available to you other than the biased information PNM is choosing to circulate. I personally am hopeful that we will retire the two coal units, move away from nuclear and add 440 megawatts of wind and 260 megawatts of solar. And although it will take some time and policy change to do so, Silver City and Grant County could realistically begin paving the way to become a solar producer that distributes electricity back to the grid, creating good clean jobs in our economically depressed area. Thank you.
Tom Manning on Energy.
Members of the council and Mayor Maronis, later in this meeting you will be addressed by Ron Darnell from PNM. I recently heard Mr. Darnell speak at an Economic Development Alliance meeting here in Silver City. Unfortunately, many of the statements he made to that group were at direct odds with the factual and public record about the power replacement plan. It is for this reason that I implore you to take what he has to say with careful deliberation and please look at the record on your own prior to drawing any conclusions on this issue that affects your constituents in so many ways. PNM's senior executives' primary concern seems to be to maximize profits for their shareholders. They have shown that they are willing to do this with this regard for the economic and environmental concerns of ratepayers. I'm not against PNM, not against PNM's ability to make a profit. I simply want them to make a reasonable profit off of the clean technologies that are available to us today. I want full disclosure of the most economical energy production choices. And where renewable choices are cost competitive, I want them to be given preference as is consistent with New Mexico's Renewable Energy Act and various other regulations. PNM has never completed an all resource request for proposal for the replacement power. This is because they do not want to evaluate renewable energy options on a consistent and comparable basis with their plan. Because they know that PNM's proposal is in fact not the most cost-effective option for ratepayers. Mr. Darnell may try to claim that PNM has been transparent in this process and yet 1.1 billion dollars in financial inaccuracies thus far have been uncovered, leading to a loss in credibility and confidence that PNM was acting in good faith. As a result, multiple signatories withdrew from the stipulation. This case has apparently set a record for the most signatories dropping out of any stipulated agreement before the PRC. The cost estimates upon which this plan is based have changed so significantly that it is now obvious that the plan needs to be changed. Make no mistake, contrary to claims of transparency, it was primarily because of the diligent efforts of New Energy Economy that these costs were disclosed. I heard Mr. Darnell dispute that the $532 million omission of operating and maintenance costs was an error or a mistake of any kind. I believe that Mr. Darnell was accurate in this statement. I believe that Mr. Darnell left these extensive costs out of their modeling program to make their plan look more cost efficient than it actually is. What company would intentionally leave everyday operating costs out of an economic feasibility analysis if they truly wanted to make cost comparisons of various options? This omission only came to light after New Energy Economy invested over $17,000 to gain access to the Strategist program. This is not transparency. I have given you a table summarizing Strategist's results that demonstrate four replacement portfolios that have been shown to be cost less than stipulation. In fact, during the deposition process, it was revealed that PNM itself analyzed a Strategist run that included 400 megawatts of wind and 260 megawatts of solar and it was shown to be cheaper than PNM's stipulation plan. And yet, just two weeks ago, I heard Mr. Darnell tell the Economic Development Alliance that the stipulation agreement represented the most cost-effective plan. When an unfair and arbitrary cap that constrained the Strategist program to 100 megawatts of wind power was discovered and removed Strategist, PNM's preferred modeling program consistently chose the higher wind capacity options as more cost effective than stipulation. If Mr. Darnell tries to tell you that the stipulation is the most cost-effective plan, look at the graph in front of you. If Mr. Darnell tries to tout the environmental benefits of PNM's plant, look at the graph. Retiring all four coal plants would be by far the best environmental solution and according to those runs, it would save $274 million over the 20-year period. What PNM wants to do is transfer more of their liabilities, their shares in Palo Verde Power Plant and San Juan Generating Station into New Mexicans' rate base. They do this as other companies are fleeing from these very same investments. PNM wants this because they know that any portion of these plants that they are able to incorporate into our rates will be converted from a liability where their shareholders will be responsible for reclamation and decommissioning costs to an asset where PNM will be guaranteed cost plus 11.4% under this sort of business agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Deborah Manning on Energy. We just have the five minutes per person on the public input.
My name is Deborah Manning. I live in Silver City, Mexico. I'm just going to continue with a statement, okay? Under this sort of business arrangement, the more their planned costs, the more PNM shareholders make. And this comes at New Mexico ratepayers, and this comes at New Mexico ratepayers, your constituents' expense. PNM's power is already the most expensive in the region. This plan would exacerbate and that's causing our rates to increase more than a replacement plan based on a renewable energy portfolio. PNM's replacement plan calls for more San Juan coal power. San Juan is the industry's most expensive power generation source in the western United States. It has a reliability record of about 75%. Their plan calls for more nuclear power from Palo Verde. Power from Palo Verde creates no New Mexico jobs, leaves us vulnerable to potentially devastating nuclear accidents and leaves a legacy of radioactive waste that will need to be isolated from the environment for approximately 100,000 years, a technical problem that we have not yet solved. That's 100,000 years. We simply don't need more radioactive waste. Their plan calls for a natural gas peaking power plant. Gas is not clean either. It still produces significant quantities of greenhouse gases in both combustion and gas production processes. Fracking has caused grave environmental harm. Unfortunately, we may need to utilize this technology to fill any potential gap in peak energy demand in order to transition to a more renewable energy future. PNM likes to spotlight the relatively small amount of renewable energy in their plan, including the 50 megawatts that they are not even contractually obligated to build. According to the stipulation, this portion would only be built if PNM decides that it is cost-effective again only if they later decide to build it. There is a growing chorus from the community for them to invest in more renewable energy. The stipulation does not really address the fact that there are safer, cleaner, healthier and less expensive power replacement options. Renewable energy and technologies are available today. PNM is rightfully looking out for their shareholders. It is the PRC and other government entities that are charged with looking out for New Mexican interests. This is why so far Santa Fe, Burnaleo County, Albuquerque City governments have all come out with resolutions against this plan. These governmental bodies represent about 80% of PNM's customers. I urge you to join these other governments in representing your constituents' best interest in demanding that PNM recognize and seize this opportunity to provide us with a cost-efficient and environmentally sensible power replacement plan. Thank you.
And we have Janet Wallis-Portiz.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak as a 30-year resident of beautiful Silver City. And I want to say in the beginning, I don't even know Mr. Darnell. I have nothing against him. And I've certainly been a faithful customer of PNM in these last 30 years, okay? Unfortunately, if citizens do not speak out vehemently against PNM's RP and if the PRC is going to cave to PNM, our increasing rates will get uglier and uglier. It is projected that under PNM's current plan, we would see a 67% increase in rates in less than 10 years, most of which would be borne by residential payers. In the last decade, ratepayers have already seen a 56% increase in rates, while commercial rates have increased by 50%. Algenon de Amasa, who wrote an article in the Deming Headlight called "PNM Profits Conflict With Public Interest", stated these rates in a May 24th article. He goes on to say that while PNM has prospered financially, we have all been paying rates much higher than the regional average. De Amasa also says, he names PNM as the fox who is watching the hen house and we all know what happens then. De Amasa states, "We must pay more, get less and subsidize PNM's profits." Mr. Darnell will likely tell you this evening that PNM has invested $350 million from '05 through '08 in pollution control equipment at San Juan to reduce four pollutants. Only four? Does that mean there are only four pollutants when you burn coal? Are these the worst of them? How many more millions will it cost to control other pollutants? When Mr. Darnell mentions installing regional haze reducing equipment on the two remaining units PNM wants to keep lumbering forward, do ask him how much that will cost and who will pay for that equipment. In addition, Mr. Darnell will probably also mention that PNM's RP includes clean, reliable sources, for example, nuclear energy. Even with zero emissions at Palo Verde, we all know that nuclear plants equal nuclear waste and dangerous possibilities for meltdowns. People may not realize that nuclear is not clean energy. PNM states that its plan is the most cost-effective alternative. Mr. Darnell will not likely allude to the fact that PNM refused to issue an all-resources RFP that would allow solar and wind to compete at market value. PNM the fox has been caught with bloody chickens in its mouth. How can anyone offer a viable alternative to what the corporation wants when they are not even allowed to submit an RFP? We may even hear tonight about how PNM is growing wind and solar resources. Really? By how much? 1%? 2%? Why not 50% renewables by 2020? It can be done and such a plan will bring thousands of jobs and training programs to the state at a time when we are certainly in dire need. While the current situation in San Juan has 700 people employed, what happens in 2019 when there is a projected 400 jobs lost? The mine closure. Between 2012 and 2014, New Mexico realized a 45% growth in New Mexico's solar jobs and wind energy is supporting 500 to 1,000 jobs with a total of 1.4 billion in capital investment, providing 2.4 million in annual lease payments to New Mexico property owners. Now that sounds environmentally sustainable and economically beneficial to many. This is taken from Tom Solomon's article, "PNM's Plan Is Bad For Business". And with coal being shunned at every turn of a smart investor's portfolio because of soaring operations and maintenance costs, environmental regulations and new standards limiting carbon pollution, et cetera, why does PNM want to stand erect on a sinking ship saluting King Coal? Indeed, why does PNM want this so badly that 1.1 billion in errors went into their RP proposal? Were they hoping that the PRC would just look the other way? How can a company the size and stature of PNM make those kinds of accidental mistakes on such an important document? This is unconscionable. The lights will not go out if the PRC insists that PNM revise its RP to include significantly more renewables and rely on an integration system with natural gas. Nobody wants more methane in our air and everybody wants jobs in sustainable energies. Don't be fooled by this sly fox. Silver City needs to get on board with Albuquerque and Santa Fe and declare PNM's RP to be archaic and corrupted. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is council comments. Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to congratulate the Members Regional Arts Council on family count for what I believe was one of the most successful Silver City Blues and Bikes Festival ever. I had put on my Facebook that I thought we really did top the 10,000. It was a sea of humanity out there on Saturday and equally, equally full on Sunday. I want to thank the volunteers, MREC volunteers, the Silver City Police Department, the Fire Department, the Parks Department, the Sheriff's Office and all of the folks that did everything that they could to make it such a successful event and to graciously welcome folks to the Town of Silver City and how beautiful everything really is here. So I think that that was pretty fantastic. I wanted to mention that I know that there is some issue on Sunday about the flags, the park not being flown. I noticed it on Saturday and knew right away that that meant that they had been recently stolen. Because the council has said before that we'd like to have those flags flying at the holiday events that are occurring in the parks. at the holiday events that are occurring in the parks. So, thanks to Mr. Brown, the Fire Department was able to find several, and they were put up late on Sunday afternoon. But I hope folks really understand that there's a lot of theft of American New Mexico state flags, not only from our park, but it's happened at the Chamber of Commerce, you know, at the visitor's center building, and it's even happened on top of our building. I know that folks get pretty upset by it, but at the same time, we have to be able to order them and be able to put them up again. It's unfortunate that people feel that they have the right to take flags that are publicly-owned when we want them to fly and to show how proud we are of both the United States of America as well as our great state of New Mexico. So, thank you to the Fire Department and to Mr. Brown for making sure those flags were found, some flags were found and put up on Saturday and Sunday. I also want to thank Mr. Brown and Mr. Penya. They're going to be, Mr. Penya's going to be looking at the intersection of Broadway and Cooper, seeing if we can potentially put in some crosswalks there. Kind of noticed somebody darting across about a week ago, and so we're hoping that we can put in some crosswalks that will kind of alert drivers that people may cross there in front of the county courthouse. And also see if we can slightly move the stop sign out of the shoulder of the handicap ramp that's on the southbound Cooper stop sign is the one I'm talking about. We are really careful now to try to make sure that when we have handicap ramps that we don't put any type of obstruction anywhere near them, and sometimes things just don't quite work the way they want, we want them to, but especially with that new stop sign. Both Cooper, Broadway always had the stop sign. Cooper didn't have the stop sign, so they'll be looking at making sure that we get that so that hopefully it's not obstructing the use of the handicap ramp. And they're very nice ones on both sides of the street. And I just want to thank everyone who made comments today. I just want to remind everyone that today's, what PNM's doing is providing a report, and I know I won't be making any type of action on it. It's just a report like what all of you provided to us today under your comments, and I just want to thank you for the information. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things. I want to announce first that the next conversation with a counselor that I'm going to host is going to be a conversations with a counselor and community development. And that will be on June tenth at six-thirty PM at the WNMU campus, Student Memorial Building, Third Four, where it's been before. And the exciting topic this time is infrastructure. So, it's vital to all of us, so come, please, and learn about the infrastructure and capital improvement plan and what it does, and you'll enjoy it, I promise. I promise. The second thing I want to say is, what a great weekend, y'all. Ooh, I got a little sun. One of the things I want to say is that I was on Broadway today, and what I am noticing, and I spoke with Mr. Brown, and I know he and the chief are on this, but people turn that corner on Cooper and then they race for the light. Slow down. There was a mom and a kid trying to get across. I was a little afraid. They were trying to cross right at where Texas and Broadway is. Slow down. Even though there's more traffic, even if you're impatient because the traffic is terrible, that's a street on which our citizens walk a lot, so be mindful as you're driving up and down Broadway. Thank you.
Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, people who come and speak, and but your appearance of PNM is very educational for all of us, and whether people are here to this many people here, this is what we strive for, for people to come here, public comment, and we like it. It's a nice packed house. Now, on the brighter side of things, we, by we, there was a bunch of us that made a movie in downtown Silver called The Movie Town, and it is a fundraiser for a circle theater. And there's a bunch of us that have different parts of doing a movie. The Matrix, Easy Rider. It's here. It's cost ten dollars. Support them. The mayor didn't want to join, neither did Mr. Marshall, and neither did Mr. Scavran, but they missed out on it, not us. Anyway, this is a good fundraiser here for a circle theater. Kudos to the Blues Festival. Very, very nice. Kudos to Ann Mackey. She brought me my cheese sandwich here. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Council Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I've been getting messages from local residents who have been telling me about local businesses that are going above and beyond in the community, and I'd like people to continue to send those to me, and I'll be sharing some of them that I've received. First of all, I thank you to Mr. Goodyear from G and G Towing. He apparently was behind some staff members from Cliff, the Cliff Schools, who are buying bikes for perfect attendance students, and he offered to pay for them, so he bought those bikes for them, just randomly having been in line, which was pretty awesome. And then also Sandra Calderon, who owns La Bonita Bakery. Over the past, I think, the whole school year, she's been offering just randomly from one day to another, she'll give free food to tell the students at Silver High School if they come across the street and show them their IDs. So, that's something that she doesn't have to be doing, but it's really nice that she's doing it, so we appreciate that. Like I said, if anyone knows of another business that's doing that, please let me know so I can announce that, too. I've been given the, well, actually, I've earned the designation of Certified Municipal Official through the New Mexico Municipal League. I will graduate in August at our annual conference, but I'm already being called a Certified Municipal Official, so that's something I'm pretty proud of. That process involves going to three trainings on education, governance, and leadership, and then doing some other things like making presentations, going to conferences, things like that. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Brown and Ms. Mackey for all of the support and the encouragement that they've given me to finish that process. It's been quite exceptional for me. I've really enjoyed it. Also, I'm not a senior, nor am I an Olympian, but this past year, I've gotten involved with the Senior Olympics of Grant County. I am involved in that because their coordinator, Mario Quintana, has been very, very insistent that I be involved, and he's done that with a lot of people in Grant County, and because of that, we've all gotten involved. And over the past three years, he's grown the program to be something pretty spectacular, and it's very impressive to be a part of it and to watch all the Olympians participate. At the same time, the Senior Olympics are going through an evolution process, we're going to call it that, and right now, we're asking for anyone who's interested in the community to join us on Friday, the nineteenth of June, at five o'clock at the Grant County Extension Office on Swan Street to discuss the future of Senior Olympics in Grant County. So, please do that. And then the last thing I have is I'm asking for Mr. Scott Terry, the Director of the Silver City Grant County Chamber of Commerce, to come forward and explain the difference in the parade for Fourth of July, because there have been several requests about that. Mr. Terry?
Hopefully, if something crazy happens in the morning, we'll be turning in a letter to the City Hall about the parade route. We visited with the state, and they didn't have any problems with us having the lineup between Broadway Street and the closure of the bridge. It's extremely wide. We'll be able to line up the parade basically in three different lines down through there, plus we can use a parking lot that's off to the side. We'll use the Broadway Bridge over the Big Ditch to put the fire trucks on before they pull into the parade. We need a special place for them in case they get a call so they can leave really easy, and that works out well. We'll use the entire Hudson Street, go up, except for right in front of the post office, the parade will run down the middle turn lane. Hopefully, we'll allow people to go out into the two outer lanes to get some of the handouts and wave at the folks and things like that. It'll stop basically down at the corner at Fourteenth and Hudson. People can go, will either probably go straight or turn to the right, and that's where it'll end. If it's a walking group, hey, guess what? It's about half the length. They're going to be happy. You know, everybody, there's some people aren't going to like it because in the past, the parade just turned and ended up over by Golf Park, and I've had some comments from people who have booths saying, "Well, I won't get to see the parade." And I'm like, "Well, just leave your booth and go over a block and watch the parade." But I think it's going to be good. I think we'll have a great turnout. And like I say, the state is pretty much a worldy, so they approve it. Alex and I visited, and so we'll get the official letter to you guys and the parade route so that he can pass it amongst the departments, but I think it'll be really nice. It's just a one-year deal, and hopefully next year, hopefully they'll have the bridge done by then, and we can go back and go back through downtown and fill the streets, because there's nothing that looks better than all the flags and all the people down Bullard Street when that parade goes through. Thank you for asking me to talk about it. You guys have any questions? Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you. Well, one thing I wanted to talk about today, completely off-subject in many cases, like to first start with by congratulating the Silver High softball team for winning their fifth state championship in a row. That's amazing to me, and one of the reasons why I even like to bring that up and congratulate them is, you know, I look at a lot of our student athletes and these young students who get onto these extracurricular activities and learn how to be competitive, how to work hard towards common goals, and still be forced to maintain good GPAs and participate in school and just, they're really learning how to be productive in life, because, believe me, life is very, very competitive, and you have to work with teams, and you have to partner and work hard towards common goals, and it's something that our student athletes do a lot. But that being said, one of the things that I was talking with the athletic director with Silver High is, he mentioned a couple of things that they're doing. One is their scholar-baller recognition, where they recognize any athletes who maintain a three-point-five grade point average during their athletic season. And out of four-hundred-and-ninety-seven students involved in twenty different sports, two-hundred-and-seventy-three of those students did maintain that three-point-five grade point average. Pretty outstanding. And even though we like to recognize these champions, I know we had a couple of track champions, we most likely had a wrestling champion, because we see them two every year. But we also had, in District Three, Four, Eight, we were the champion in volleyball, football, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, wrestling, softball, boys' track, and girls' track. And in state tournaments, playoffs, we participated in volleyball, football, cross-country, girls' soccer, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, wrestling, baseball, softball, girls' golf, and girls' track, boys' tennis, dance, and co-ed cheer. So, you know, we have a lot of students here that are really working hard and representing our community well, and, like I said, learning teamwork, looking, learning how to work hard towards common goals, and still maintaining a good academic grade point average. It's extremely impressive to me, and I hope they continue to do that. And, you know, and even in that competitive vein, you know, I look at Mr. Scavran, I know his daughter just got an academic letter. You know, Silver High also has academic letters where you can letter academically, and I think that there's a tremendous amount of students and just wonderful kids that are also learning that competitive spirit, and I really want to congratulate them. I want to bring this to your attention, because in many cases, I, like some people, we like to get cynical on the youth of today and where are we going, and as I look at this, I think we're pretty safe going forward. We have some good people coming up, and our future leaders are probably excelling far more than I did at their age, so I look, I feel good about it. Anybody else need round two? Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask Mr. Chief Reynolds if he may be able to give us on the next town council meeting a report on gang activity, if possible. And Mr. Brown, there's a situation on Cooper Street from Broadway on the west side at the Little Bedlam Breakfast. The car can park too close to the, to the, but, but, what, I heard, parked too close, but it's very possible where they could put up a yellow line, because people coming down on Cooper Street and people going up on Cooper Street towards the highway name, it's too close.
I think you're right.
Okay.
Any changes to the agenda? Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me restate that. I'm wanting to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of May twelfth, two thousand and fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, a second to motion as stated. Second time.
We have a motion a second for approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, May twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Is there any discussion? We have a motion a second as read in the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, under reports, is a report about the PNM plan for the San Juan Generating Station by Ron Darnell, Senior Vice President of PNM. And I'd like to thank Mr. Darnell. You know, I asked Bruce for a presentation, and this is simply a presentation. There is no items to be under for action, for discussion, or anything like that, but I did ask that, they informed us about what they're looking to do and maybe offered themselves for some questions, and they were very kind to make themselves willing to do so, and I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
You're very welcome. Mayor, councilpeople, and all of those that actually get the work done, no, I'm just kidding. But I just wanted to take a moment to actually say thank you for all of the support that the town gives to the festivals, to the different events that come into our area. As a member of the MREC Board, I really wanted to publicly thank you for your support. It was different this year. There were a lot of challenges, a lot of things that could have been different, you know, for you guys as well. And it's not only the Blues Festival, but you just did a proclamation for the rodeo. There's so many different events that you support, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you for the fact that you do that. So, I just handed out a picture, and I want you to notice that what that is, is we had an opportunity to help out with a dance that was offered to the people that still live in our community from World War II. There was a request from the mayor of Santa Clara. I was able to get two scissor lifts donated from Blue Line Rental, and I thanked them publicly for that. And our guys went out and hung all of those flags. Last Thursday, we actually completed what we call our Day of Service. Our Day of Service had four different projects. A group of our employees went and painted the inside of the Girl Scout hut. We had a project at the Volunteer Center where we did some landscaping. We had two other projects that were completed that probably would not have been able to be done if it wasn't for the fact that PNM employees went and helped out. So, the only reason I bring this stuff to your attention is because America's a great place, and it's wonderful that everybody can express opinions and come and testify. But I want you to understand that you guys represent more than the people that are here tonight. There's twenty people in that picture, and there's twenty more that work at that center that work hard and put money into the economy and help move things forward in the area that we live. So, I just wanted to bring that out, and I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce Ron Darnell and have him come and present this plan.
Thanks, Bruce. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to come discuss the plan and where we stand in this, what we call the San Juan docket. And let me just start by saying a couple of things. I think you would hear from the same thing from any utility, whether it's a municipally-owned utility, a cooperative utility, or an investor-owned utility like PNM, and that is that we all strive to balance three things: reliability, affordability, and the production of electricity in the most environmentally way possible. And it always strikes me when I kind of come to a gathering like this is that we don't disagree. disagree on what we want. What we disagree on usually is how fast to get there and how we can get there. And so, what I just point out is, you know, we hear a lot that PNM could do more. And just to sort of put that in perspective, California is definitely a state that is doing more. They're a very presidatory, my associate here. We're trying to remember what their renewable requirements are, but we believe they're working on 40% by 2030, and they've set a goal of 30% by 2025. They lead the nation in exploring battery storage, which would really make renewables viable, because you'd have a way to, you know, bridge over when the sun's not shining and the wind's not blowing. But his daughter, for example, lives in San Diego, so a customer of San Diego Gas &amp; Electric. Well, her rates are 15 cents at the bottom, 17 cents at the next block, very, very small blocks, and then they jump to 35 and 37. You can do a lot of innovation at those kinds of rates. And, you know, we heard some criticism about our rates. Our rates are not the highest in the region. Our bills are actually some of the lowest in the region, and that, of course, has to do with great weather, but also the fact that PNM has invested over $100 million in the last seven or eight years in energy efficiency. And I think one thing we can all agree on is that the cheapest, cleanest kilowatt hour is the one you don't produce. As far as rates go, just to again put things in perspective, our rates are sort of in the middle of the mountain region. Our average rates, as are PNM's average rates, are at 12.97 cents a kilowatt hour for residential. Nevada's at 12.88. Colorado's at $12.18, and Arizona, which has a lot of coal, is at 11.98. So, I think we've done a good job actually of balancing reliability, affordability, and environmentally responsibility. And I say that, again, let's put some numbers in perspective. Our system is about 2,000 megawatts. We have 306 megawatts of wind online now. We'll have 107 megawatts of solar online by the end of 2015. We have 15 megawatts of customer-owned DG. We don't own that, it's just interconnected to our system, and that grows by about 3 megawatts a year. And we have the first geothermal facility online, that's about an hour and a half southwest of here, Lightning Rock, or Lightning Dock, I mean, and we're proud of that. That is a big part of the future of renewable, because it's what we call dispatchable, it runs 24/7. And in terms of jobs, you know, we use largely to build our solar fields a company called Affordable Solar. They built some big solar, or big solar facilities down here, and they employ New Mexicans. So I think it's fair to say that PNM is probably responsible for a tremendous amount of green, green economy and green energy jobs. But I'll move on to the presentation. I'm going to skip over some of the sort of allegations, and I'll stand for questions on those. I just want to address the billion-dollar error quickly. There was no billion-dollar error. There was a $300 million error, had nothing to do with the actual cost to customers. It was found by New Energy Economy. We, it was discovered around Thanksgiving, this last Thanksgiving. We informed everyone in the docket, all the interveners. It really wasn't an issue because it was basically a side study that compared one portfolio to another portfolio to another portfolio. And the $300 million error was in the same, was in the same portfolio, was the same error made in each one of those portfolios, so the delta didn't change, except it was, and it was a $300 million error in coal costs. I'll just leave it at that. I'll say the other 800,000 or 800 million, if that's the number, had to do with changing assumptions. The O&amp;M was something that, again, was left out of all of those scenarios because it was the same number in each scenario, and the parties decided to go ahead and include that, didn't change the delta. And the other error was not an error, which is an update of assumptions having to do with load. This case was, went on for a number of months, and as I'm sure you, if you have looked at putting budgets together, if you're looking over that, or putting a budget together over a period of time, assumptions change, and that was the case here. But we do take, we do take our responsibility to the economy seriously. We're the only Fortune 500 company that's actually headquartered here in New Mexico, and I want to come back to that in just a minute at the very end when I talk about the impact in Farmington of the plan. So just a quick history. It was noted that PNM invested about $350 million in the '05 to '08 in pollution control equipment at San Juan, and it reduced four pollutants: nitrogen oxide by about 41%, sulfur dioxide by 71%, particulate matter by 72%, mercury by 87%. We hardly emit any mercury, didn't do a thing for carbon. In April 2015, in other words, this last April, the American Lung Association rated San Juan County number two in the nation for particulate matter. So we're proud of the environmental improvements that were made at that plant. The issue that we had beginning in 20, really in 2008, was around regional haze. And regional haze is, there are regional haze rules that are part of the Clean Air Act, and these regional haze rules are meant to protect the visibility in the iconic national parks and national wilderness areas. And there are about 16, they're called Class 1 areas, that surround San Juan. And so the EPA naturally was very interested in controlling particularly NOx at San Juan because NOx is a major contributor to regional haze. Now, this was kind of a long process. The EPA had a plan that would have cost ratepayers a billion dollars. And PNM's share of that billion dollars was about half of that, about 500 million. And we often get accused of being sort of, you know, just money grabbers, profit seekers, profit takers. The easiest thing at that point would have been to basically roll over and agree with the EPA and claimed, you know, that it was a federal requirement to put that pollution control equipment on. We never came close to doing that. We always thought that was a bad deal. We tried to argue with the EPA and reason with the EPA. We felt we had a plan that would have increased the visibility almost as much for a tenth of the cost. We saw a stay in court of the EPA rule, that was denied. So at that point, we decided that we had to negotiate some type of a deal with the EPA. And so with the help of the Martinez administration, specifically New Mexico Environmental Department, and in conjunction with the EPA, we agreed to retire two units at San Juan, units 2 and 3. And that reduces the overall production of coal at that unit from 683 megawatts to 847 megawatts, and that's a fact. If the plan is approved, the emissions, the coal production is cut in half at that facility. It reduces seven different emissions that was mentioned before because of the retirement, including carbon, and that's a real key. There is no cost-effective commercially available technology to control carbon. And that was the other issue that we had with the EPA's plan, a billion dollars. You know, we knew that, I think we all knew, that eventually carbon would be regulated. I can tell you this, that based on the Clean Power Plan, the proposed Clean Power Plan that was set forth, it was published in June of last year, in New Mexico, if that plan stays as it is now, and the final plan is due, we hear now in August of this year, New Mexico will be compliant with the EPA's carbon regulations for the state of New Mexico. And that includes early on, there's kind of two big dates, 2020 and 2030. And the backbone of that compliance is the foresight this state had to enact a renewable portfolio standard, which requires companies like PNM to change out part of their portfolio to renewables, a very aggressive energy efficiency legislation called the Efficient Use of Energy Act, and the retirement of those two units at San Juan. The controversy is not around retiring two units of coal. The controversy is how to replace that capacity. And what it, I can't deny with the way it was characterized, so let's just go over that really quickly. Part of that retirement plan is to bring 135 megawatts of nuclear capacity from Palo Verde. And Palo Verde is a nuclear power station that's located just outside of Phoenix. PNM owns 10% of that plant. Its 10% ownership in Unit 3 has never been sold to the New Mexico retail ratepayers. We asked to bring that in. We asked to bring it in at a cost of 1650 KW. The market value is about 2,500. In his decision, the hearing examiner thought that that was a good asset, but he thought it looked better at a lower price, so I think what he approved was something like 1071. But that is one of the, if not the very best performing nuclear plant in the world, actually. And, you know, it's got plenty of on-storage, or onsite, storage. It's licensed to run through 2046 by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and it is an emission-free source of base load power. And until we figure out how to, you know, make renewables viable for keeping the lights on at night or producing power when the wind's not blowing and the sun's not shining, we're going to be using fossil and we're going to be using nuclear. As a part of that plan was also to build a gas peaking plant in San Juan County. We agreed to build it up there to help mitigate some of the tax-based loss to retiring units 2 and 3. That's a peaking plant, so it won't run very much, it'll only run the, probably the top 8 to 10% hours in the year in terms of 8 to 10% of highest demand for electricity. We also proposed to build 40 megawatts of solar, and we were actually quite excited about that. You know, I hope I, I hope I can convince you that we don't hate solar. Solar's a very good investment, and it's a very good fit for New Mexico. And the strategist model that was mentioned earlier, for the first time, picked solar as the cost-effective resource. And the reason is twofold, and related. One is the price of the panels have come down so far that it's now cost-effective to put those panels on trackers. And so these panels and all of the utility-scale fields that we are building now, solar fields, that those panels will track the sun. And the reason that's important, it increases the output of the field by 30%, so it looks very much like a gas, like a gas plant in terms of the way it produces electricity, but obviously it doesn't have a fuel cost and it's emissions-free. We also continue to commit the solar program, the Solar Beach Disgrid Generation Program, which is set to expire in 2016. We agreed that we would continue paying what are called RECs, Renewable Energy Credits, through 2019, and we said we would issue a 50-megawatt all-source renewable RFP, which we intend to do if the stipulation is approved within four to six weeks of that approval. Moving on to the next-to-last slide. I mentioned this already, but PNM not only has to comply with regional haze rules in order to keep that plant running, it also has to comply with the Clean Power Plan. This plan agreed to by the staff of the commission, New Mexico Attorney General NEMIAC, which stands for New Mexico Industrial Electric Consumers. It's a group that represents our largest customers in New Mexico, including the city of Albuquerque, the city of Albuquerque, U&amp;M, as well as many other large customers. They agreed to that plan. The hearing examiner agreed, and I'll be very careful how I say this, the hearing examiner agreed that the plan was cost-effective. There was no other plan that was found to be either cost-effective or implementable, if that's a word. What the hearing examiner said, basically, was he didn't think PNM could execute on the plan because several agreements that are necessary had not been completed. So, that's a kind of a good point, a place to stop for just one second, review where we're at with that docket. So after months of investigations, PNM answered literally thousands of interrogatories. There was a three-week hearing. The hearing examiner in that docket did not approve the company's plan that was agreed to by the Attorney General NEMIAC and the staff. And so we're in the process now. All the briefs have been filed. The commission at some point will begin, the utility, the Public Regulation Commission of New Mexico will begin to debate the merits of the recommended decision. And it's on the agenda tomorrow. I think it's going to be limited to discussing how to, how to look at a number of agreements that PNM said they would bring to the commission's attention. The first one was a coal contract. The second one was a restructuring agreement amongst the owners that want to stay in the plant. Those were filed May 1st after the record was closed, so there's some, there's some issue about how to get this on the record, and that's what will be discussed tomorrow. But turning, and there's really not much more I can say about that. It's, you know, we recognize that it stirred a lot of emotion. There was a, quite a large press conference in Albuquerque Thursday, attended by the business leaders of Albuquerque, and many people from Farmington and the Navajo Nation in support of the plan. We heard a lot of public comment today, obviously in opposition of the plan. The commission is going to make a decision, and, you know, PNM will have to, at the end of the day, abide by that decision. But we do believe the best plan going forward is the one we've put forth, including the replacement plan. Lastly, what I'll say about just how much, you know, renewables and how quickly can we get there, which really isn't a part of this docket, but it is a part of an Integrated Resource Plan that by state statute is filed every three years, and we will file our next one in 2017. And one commitment I'll make to, you know, all of you here in Silver City tonight, is that there is a public process that also is required by statute, and that starts in 2016. And an Integrated Resource Plan looks at a company's, utility company's, power portfolio and looks at what is the best way to meet electricity demand going forward. And my commitment is, is that I will bring my team, those folks report to me, I will make sure that they are down here as part of that public process for a very robust discussion of how fast and at what cost we can move towards, towards a different type of portfolio. My last slide, just want to talk a little bit about our role as an economic leader here in the state. You know, PNM doesn't serve Farmington, okay? We don't sell any electricity up there. We have a power plant up there, obviously, San Juan, and a number of customers, or excuse me, a number of employees. And I will tell you this, I will take coming here any day of the week and describing our plan over going up to the city council in Farmington and trying to justify closing down two units of San Juan because of the economic devastation that was going to cause to that town. They don't have any upside or downside from a rate perspective, because we don't sell them electricity. It's just, you know, it's from an economic perspective, there's a lot of downside. What PNM and its role as a leader, what we said a couple of things. One, we said that there will be no layoffs due to retirements of Units 2 and 3. And the reason we can make that commitment, and we know we can make good on it, it is an older workforce, many of them will transition out into retirement, but if anyone wants to stay there, because they're not a retirement age, we will retrain them for a job at the two remaining units. The other thing to understand is about 25% of our workforce at the power plant is Navajo, and about 40% of the mine that serves the coal that goes into that plant is Navajo. We committed a million dollars over, beginning in 2014, we would give 200,000 increments over five years to job education for Navajos at the San Juan College and the Navajo Technical University. So far, that program has had 208 participants and 47 graduates. Just lastly, just to give you some statistics, the coal mine and plant payroll is approximately $104.1 million, produces annual royalties of $8.8 million, state and county taxes of $31 million, and that doesn't even begin to address all of the other sort of feeder companies that perform services for the plant and for the mine. Basically, I think it's linear. If you retire two units, you're cutting those amounts in half. And San Juan County commissioners, the city, they have to figure out a way to replace that. And we take that obligation and those ramifications seriously when we put this plan forward and defend it. So with that, I will say that utilities are the most transparent company, are the most transparent companies in business because we're regulated. I will stand for questions. I will answer questions as honestly as I can. If I don't have the answer, I'll let you know, and I will get it and get back to you through Bruce.
Any questions? Counselor Anderson?
Just a quick clarification, sir. You're talking about NEMIAC, which sounds like some sort of a computer, but it's actually a group of people who lobby or are advocates for things. And indeed, I understand that NEMIAC did come out in favor of this stipulation, but then that the City of Albuquerque Council voted to withdraw from NEMIAC. Is that correct?
Partly. So NEMIAC is, it's not really a lobbying group. It is New Mexico Electric Industrial Consumers. And so what the real purpose is, is to intervene in rate cases, you know, and advocate for their customers.
Advocate.
Yeah. And so, of course, you know, okay. So the City of Albuquerque is a part of NEMIAC. But the city council voted, they passed a resolution basically opposing, and I guess, asking that it be known that the city council did not, contrary to NEMIAC's position, was opposed to the stipulation. Now, I'm not aware of any movement to officially have the city withdraw NEMIAC.
I think I read that on their website, that the council had voted to do that, but I'm not sure either, so.
Yeah, there's obvious difference of opinion.
Well, we could look and see. I just want to say that, you know, I was born and raised in Farmington and had a number of family who worked at that plant. And I do know that it must be tough to talk to folks who have a livelihood concern about that. I just want to say that I think that there was a hearing in Farmington, or the PRC had a hearing in Farmington, and it was fairly lively discussion, is what I understood, with a number of people being concerned, expressing many of the same sentiments that citizens did tonight. So it's not like unanimous, all of Farmington is one way or the other, because my cousins call me up and say, "Have you heard about this?" So I just wanted to say, it's not one-sided anywhere. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short recess.
Mr. Mayor, a second there.
We have a motion, a second for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in recess. Call this meeting back to order. Still in reports, any reports, Alex?
No.
Robert, Anne?
Chief.
Chief ran away, so he's avoiding comments. So we are, we will move on to a public hearing. Next on the agenda is a public hearing entitled "Approval/Disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-11 Providing for the Encroachment of a Grease Barrel Owned by Q's Southern Bistro LLC Doing Business as Fry House on a Portion of the Texas Street Right-of-Way." The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had ex parte discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party to this case?
No, sir.
You are all qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony, or who will be available for questioning, please rise and come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Ms. Marshall, if you please. Do y'all plan to testify? Okay, y'all need them. Sign in. Please write your name and address. Have you signed up already? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony I am about to give in the matter before this council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury.
Our hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken by the director, by PMZ, commission, or by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of applicant's case. The applicant, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief and states that the proponent of it and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer will ask the applicant, "Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?" Town staff, please present your, the application.
Tracy Burnstead, I am the planning technician with the Community Development Department. And tonight, I'll be presenting the encroachment permit application 15-01. The applicant is Q's Bistro LLC Doing Business as the Fry House. Their address is 601 North Bullard Street, Suite C at the Hub, and the property is leased from Open Window LLC. All right, the encroachment permit is for a grease barrel on the sidewalk of the Texas Street Right-of-Way totaling eight square feet in area. And I think I have the pointer here. You can see the applicant is located in Suite C, and the proposed location of the grease barrel would be behind the building on Texas Street on the east side. The dimensions of the proposed encroachment, it's four foot by two feet, and you can kind of see over here, this is the sidewalk. The length of the barrel would be against the wall, and two feet of the width would encroach into the seven-foot-wide sidewalk, leaving five feet of pedestrian access route. The proposed location for the grease barrel requires that the applicant carry containers of oil considerable distance to fill the grease barrel, was 200, or 326 linear feet from the door of Suite C down the sidewalk and around back to Texas Street at the proposed location. A water source for cleaning is not located nearby, and the grease barrel may be used by multiple businesses in the near future. The grease barrel's current location is on the north side of the Hub Plaza behind a tree. You can see in this photo, the left photo, it's back in the shadow. And if you're looking west, this is the Green Turtle Nostrum, and it's located over here close to the restroom and the garbage cans, and it's about eight to 10 feet away from the pedestrian open space of the plaza. And you can see in this photo, there's a water source with a hose located adjacent. And this is the location over here. And just to review, the purpose of an encroachment permit authorizes the applicant to encroach upon a public right-of-way with the building or structure under certain conditions. The review procedures, the community development director shall have responsibility for reviewing applications for encroachment permits and making a recommendation to the town council to either approve or deny the request. And with this presentation, we'll be making that recommendation. Okay.
Counselor Madison?
Please clarify what recommendation you said. It's all in sentence.
So we'll be making a recommendation to the town council to either approve or deny the request. And this is according to the Land Use Code, Section 6.3.9. And the criteria under this section of the Land Use Code, the town council may approve an encroachment permit if it finds that the requested permit conforms to the town's comprehensive plan, the land use code, and any relevant policies adopted by the town. Number two, the proposed encroachment does not endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the community, and the proposed encroachment is the minimum necessary to make reasonable use of the applicant's property. So we'll be examining this, these criteria with this presentation. Also, under the Land Use Code of 2010, and under Section 6.2.11, the Community Development Department contacted the property owners as identified by the Grant County tax rolls within 300 feet of the affected area by mail. One person responded at the time of submission of the meeting packet. It was Jim Barnes, and he had concerns if the container smells, that he does not want it in the proposed location because he regularly walks along that sidewalk. He also mentioned that in the 45 years that he's lived in his home, that there have been several accidents along that sidewalk, including a car that hit the gas meters, and he would like to make sure that the town determines who's responsible if the oil container is hit and spills. And he's also concerned with vandalism of the oil container. And I also received some comments after submission of the meeting packet. And I received one phone call from the Good Shepherd Episcopal Church, Sarah Boye, and Sarah stated that the grease barrels are a real concern for our congregation. This is across the street from the proposed location. And she's been gardening out in front of the church, cleaned out their parish hall, and installed a bench for contemplation for parishioners in front of the church that faces the location of the proposed oil container. And she says they do not want to be anti-business, but she has serious concerns about the smell and appearance of the barrel negatively affecting the atmosphere. And they open windows for their services, they have monthly garage sales, and they have the Sixth Street After School program there. And I also received a personal visit to the office from Mr. David Berry. Mr. Berry commented that the historic district should be held to higher standards. The Fry House had not done appropriate due diligence in starting their business if they do not have an appropriate location for their grease barrel, and the city should not take on the business's issue. It could expose the city to liability if vandalized, and he's concerned with vermin such as skunks and mice, and he wonders why they can't keep it in its existing location. Mr. John Bell, Senior Warden of the Good Shepherd Episcopal Church, he commented by a phone call, and he's concerned with the increased smell of the proposed grease barrel because the Fry House already has an existing smell when they're cooking. All their parishioners, 120 to 150, except those needing universal accessibility, use the front door on Texas Street, and he thinks that it should not be allowed in a historic district in downtown. And then I also received an email from Paula Geisler-Harrison, and she says, "Hello, I have been shown all pertinent documents relating to this request, both from the city and from the Hub. I agree wholeheartedly with the city planners, police, and fire chiefs, and hope the encroachment request will be denied. There exists at present a grease receptacle on the Hub's private property concealed out of sight, close to water. Why should the city assume responsibility, liability, oversight for potentially hazardous situation the business owners should take care of?" And then the property owner was also required to contact the property owners in the 300-foot radius by mail, and she posted notice signs on Texas, Sixth, and Bullard Streets. And the property owner who prepared the citizen participation report wrote the following comment, "The neighbors I spoke with were excited about the new demographic and the energy being brought downtown by the Fry House and the new proposed restaurants." Comments on the application by town staff? The utilities, engineering, and the meters department had no comment. The fire department commented that security measures must be in place to prevent tipping and unauthorized opening of the container. The public works department commented that the owner will be responsible for cleaning of any spills or replacement of sidewalk if needed. And the public works director also had experience with this this weekend after the Blues Festival. There was an oil spill in the street, and he said it's very difficult to clean up. The police department commented that they recommend not allowing on the sidewalk, which is a blind area with public access, and also an odor problem. Code enforcement commented that there are concerns for a secure enclosure for stored oil to prevent any vandalism. Smell and flies can accumulate in hotter weather, and they prefer to keep the grease tank where it is now, out of the way of pedestrians, hidden behind shrubs. The clean-out schedule could be performed during is a blind area with public access, and also an odor problem. Code enforcement commented that there are concerns for a secure enclosure for stored oil to prevent any vandalism. Smell and flies can accumulate in hotter weather, and they prefer to keep the grease tank where it is now, out of the way of pedestrians, hidden behind shrubs. The clean-out schedule could be performed during early morning delivery hours to address parking access. And to look at the zoning of the area where the proposed location of the grease barrel, it's located in the historic downtown commercial district. And this district is intended to accommodate a mix of commercial uses, serving visitors, residents, mixed-use buildings, and residential buildings in the historic central business core, and to provide a variety of building sizes compatible with the character of the Silver City Historic District. And this last sentence is of note, applies directly. The district encourages a high level of vitality through diverse activities conveniently accessible to pedestrians. And that little blue piece down there. So then we looked at the criteria, whether or not the application was in line with the town's comprehensive plan. And Section 3-17, titled "A Pedestrian Friendly Community," specifically states to provide an overall attractive, pleasant setting for foot traffic. And in evaluating what would make an attractive, pleasant setting for foot traffic, Mr. Marshall and I took a tour of different grease barrels throughout the community. And the left picture is the best-case scenario, that we saw, and the right hand was the worst-case scenario. The best case was Q's Bistro. There was no odor at all with that grease barrel. But you can kinda see, as far as the appearance, the top of it has a little bit of oil. You can see where it's run down the side, and you can also see the sidewalk is stained down below it. The worst-case scenario, I had gone back to take a picture of this, and it was a windy day, and I was about 50 feet away from it, and I could smell it. It had the odor of on it, and the sides of it are crusted with grease, and it's run down the side of the barrel, all over the ground. So depending on how well the grease barrel could or could not be aligned with the attractive, pleasant setting for foot traffic. There's also a Section 4.8 in the comprehensive plan, transportation and circulation, accessibility for the handicapped, compliance with ADA requirements. And the comprehensive plan says to keep sidewalks clear and free of all impediments, including traffic signs, utility poles, gas meters, mailboxes, and other items. The town should develop a program based on the adopted sidewalk regulations for the gradual removal of any such barriers and impediments. And as you can see, the Texas Street sidewalk does have existing impediments. But if we couple this language with the requirements of the Town of Floricity Land Use Code on newly constructed local commercial streets, the minimum sidewalk width is six feet, except on blocks where the average parcel footage is 50 feet or less. And so, it would be considered an impediment to put the grease barrel on the sidewalk. The sidewalk with the encroachment would still meet the current ADA minimum width of three feet. But just to give you a visual of the enforceable, of the, what a six-foot sidewalk would look like, and who could pass by, and this is also a proposed guideline for enforceable standards under the United States Access Boards Proposal, six feet would allow for two wheelchairs to pass by side by side. And then we looked at the other criteria that I presented before, under the requirements of the Land Use Code for encroachment permits, and that's whether or not the permit application endangers the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. And as noted by code enforcement and the fire department staff, the possibility of vandalism, such as tipping the barrel into the sidewalk or street, could affect the safety of the community, possibly as an obstruction in the street. And if not maintained properly or screened, nuisance, odor, and offensive appearance could endanger the general welfare of the community, both residents on the west side of Texas Street, and the surrounding areas, and visitor and citizen pedestrians on the sidewalk at the proposed location. And then, we looked at the criteria for reasonable use of the applicant's property. And the proposed encroachment is not the minimum necessary to make reasonable use of the applicant's property. The current location of the barrel on the north side of the Hub Plaza is more appropriate due to its 10-feet separation from pedestrian access routes, proximity to the water source, more publicly-watched area to prevent vandalism, and less distance and less opportunity for spilling than the proposed location for the applicant to fill the barrel. Visual screening is provided by the tree, and the location beside the trashcans and the restrooms that are likely used, because they might also be prone to producing odor. So, we feel that that location is more than a reasonable use of the applicant's property.
Excuse me, may I, for one moment? And probably, I probably could've talked this earlier, but looking at the map and understanding where the location is for the grease barrel, and the intent that other restaurants are probably going to be using it, and that the square footage, the actual location of Fries', the whole issue in an encroachment permit is to allow the owner, the holder of a land interest, to make full use of their own property. And sometimes it requires encroaching on public property in order to make full use of that property. Looking at this case now, and seeing that it's likely that the owner of the property is not Fries', the owner of the property is a different entity, and there is an anticipation that this grease barrel be used by other tenants on this property, I conclude that the applicant should not be the individual tenant, but the applicant should be the land owner, the entity that owns the property, that is looking, saying that that property, that she cannot make full use of that property without an encroachment. Now, I didn't interrupt earlier, because this recommendation is not dependent on the applicant, it's dependent on an analysis of the facts on the ground and the law in the Land Use Code. But what I wanna suggest is that maybe the recommendation may, maybe perfectly fine the way it is dealing with this particular applicant, but I'm gonna suggest, and I've talked with the Assistant Town Manager about whether it would be appropriate, whether he'd go along with this, being the director, in this case, that the applicant be substituted, that the council, or that the council permit a substitution of applicant from Fries' to the owner of the building. I don't know what entity owns the building, I don't remember offhand what the name of that entity is, but I know that the prime owner is Ms. Katz. And to allow the, allow that substitution, I don't think there's any procedural due-process issues, but at the same time, I think that Ms. Katz should be given the opportunity of continuing this case to the next council meeting if she does not feel prepared to argue what she needs to argue.
Mr. Kat Skavron, I have a question directed to you. That if there's a substitution made, then the material originally placed in this application was by Q's. There is a letter from the owner of the property, but, I mean, as a council member, I've been given all of this, I can't now ignore what was stated in the applicant's, which is the Fry House. I can't ignore their statements in there unless this is, unless it's completely, because, I mean, I have questions based on some statements that were made in the application. So, I mean, are you recommending that we ignore the Fry, the Fry House's?
The Fry House, that's their, it's going to be their testimony. And as far as if the applicant-
I filled out all the forms, I wrote the letters, all the signs.
Why is this being listed as the applicant being Fries'? -
He started it, and then I did all the letters, all the signs.
Okay, so, okay, so, then it's, then you don't find it to be a disadvantage to you if you proceed as the applicant now?
I would love that, thank you.
Then, with, with the agreement of the Assistant Town Manager, and the agreement of the underlying applicant, I would say that we should go ahead with the case, and let Ms. Katz be the primary, be the applicant, and Fries' is one of the witnesses that will, everybody's been sworn in, so Fries' can continue to make its case in support of the applicant.
I have objections to changing the applicant for the hearing. Sorry. I think the staff report that has been presented, and all the, the investigation that was conducted, was, doesn't change with the applicant's name. It's all, all the material facts remain the same. So, we, we would not object to changing the applicant.
It doesn't change the, it doesn't change the content or, or anything that's being discussed here, it's just a matter of a formal name. And she, and, and she is listed in this resolution, just as the property owner, though, but-
And actually, Ms. Katz has indicated that she is the shadow applicant anyway, so we're just conforming the paperwork to meet what's actually happening.
Are there any objections to changing the applicant's? Counselor Beckson?
Just have a question for Mr. Skavron. For the record, then, meaning currently, the, everything's been put out underneath the applicant's name of Q's Southern Bistro, DBA's Fry House. So it was already published that way, it's on the agenda that way. The question is, is really procedural, can we do this in the middle of a public hearing? Change the name of the applicant, although it's already been published as someone else, even though, you know, Ms. Katz's name is on here? I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna be facing some sort of legal issue because of its already previous publication.
We haven't run into this before, but let's say we had a case going on, and it was an applicant for an encroachment onto a street of their own house. And then you find out that in the divorce, it was the wife sitting in the audience that got the house. At that point, you say, "Wait a minute, you're not the owner of the house, you lost the house to the wife in the divorce, she should be the one up here." And she says, "Well, I agree with this, this is what I want too." And that type of a situation, either you say, "No, you gotta come back and start the whole process over," with you being the name on the encroachment permit, or we do a substitution and let you present. And the fact that how, if you look at reasonably, how has the public been dis-served materially? The issue has to do with a grease barrel and a location, not the owner of the corporation, and not the owner of a restaurant. The, the justice in this case has nothing to do with the identity of the applicant, or it shouldn't be. It should be with what the Land Use Code says, and what the analysis of the facts on the ground says. So, the, if we wanted to play it absolutely safe, and I think probably unnecessary, is that you say, "Wait a second here, you're not the right applicant, go back and do it over again. So we'll see you at the next meeting. Have Ms. Katz submit the paperwork again." The analysis of what's on the ground is not gonna change, right? The, the facts, unless something dramatic happens between now and the next council meeting on the location, or the, what the, what the code says, the code's not gonna change, the law's not gonna change. The people that have been given notice, and I was one of them, 'cause my office is across the street, I knew, I didn't care who the entity was, all I cared about was what's gonna happen, and what does the law say about it? So, what's the chance of doing something wrong by allowing a different applicant? Technically, it's not according to the book, but the book doesn't cover this particular situation. If you find an applicant, and in the middle of the case, you find, hey, there should be somebody else here, that, and they say, "Well," the other person steps forward and says, "I subscribe to everything that my proxy stated." Right now, if Fries' say, "I'm actually a proxy for Jamie Katz," well, that should've been identified early on, at the beginning of the case, right? Does it do harm? I don't know. If you wanted to play it absolutely safe, you'd say, "Well, you're not, this doesn't apply to you, you're a tenant, you're not the property owner, this is not affecting your full use of the property, this is an amenity, just like the restrooms, to allow your business to operate, and that you should be looking to the landlord for those amenities, not to the town council." So, I was looking, other than saying this thing should, that this is wrong, that there should be a different applicant, and this case, you don't have a real party in interest here, so you shouldn't continue, or looking for another way that doesn't interfere with the justice of the case, is to allow the substitution at this point, reflecting that there was a shadow applicant, and that the applicant now wants to come forward, take responsibility.
I think, Mr. Beckson, I think no material change. We, both the owner and the tenant have both been fully identified, and it's, the facts that are gonna be presented should not change based on any, on that, on that fact. I think everybody was well aware of, of who's doing what, and unless there's any further objection-
Justice, Justice.
Counselor Beckson?
Thank you, Mayor. Justice, Justice, and that the owner of the property actually state, for the record, as what you had just stated, rather than having our town, town attorney do that, have the property owner come forward-
I agree that would be appropriate.
And that needs to be done. And I don't, I know that there's a certain way to do these things, but at some point, I mean, it should probably be made clear by that property owner now, and the, and the shadow applicant. I mean, if that's proper to do so, I need to ask the presiding officer-
You know, I think it actually serves justice better, because the real intent of this was not just for Fries'.
Right.
That's why Mr. She, that's why Shevick is here, and that's, he's also gonna use that barrel. And so, let's, let's deal with it as a comprehensive matter, that there's, that she wants to have a grease barrel where it's been identified, and it's gonna be for, let's expose the, the real use is not just for Fries', but it's gonna be for other restaurants as well. And that way, you can deal with it as much more comprehensively than just saying it's for Fries', for fries, and then later, you find other businesses carrying pails of oil over to dump into the, into that, that barrel, that you authorized only for one business.
Okay, so, so, it'll be up to the hearing officer to make the decision about when the actual land owner, property owner makes the statement that they're the ones that are pursuing this request.
Correct.
Ms. Katz, would you like to be the substituted entity in person as the applicant? Could you just state your name and the company you represent?
My name is Jamie Katz, and I'm the manager of Open Window LLC, which owns the, the Hub Plaza.
And just for clarification, you did fill out all the paperwork, and you've been operating as the applicant, as the tenant's name?
I thought I was the applicant. Exactly. Anthony Quintana started it, and he was really busy opening a restaurant, so I wrote the letters, I filled out all the things, I paid the 75 bucks. I was the applicant, you know, and these guys, and these guys know, you know, but I needed Anthony to know about things like, well, what kind of different barrels can we have? Can we do this? Can we do that? What's your, you know, and I'm sure he'll testify to, you know, why this won't be a nuisance.
Perfect. I, I believe that we should accept the substitution as the, you are the substituted applicant.
Thank you.
Are you still doing? Town, town staff, please complete your...
Thank you. Okay, so, it's the opinion of the community development department director and his designated me, myself, based solely on information included in the application, that it's an input, departmental comment, and analysis of the town's plans and land use code, that the town council deny the request for the reasons presented. But if after hearing further evidence presented in the public hearing, the permit is recommended for approval by the town council, the community development director and his designated me recommend the following conditions. The grease barrel must be maintained in a sanitary condition to be emptied and cleaned regularly so as not to emit a nuisance odor or appearance. The grease barrel must be secured so as not to subject, not to be subject to vandalism such as tipping or unauthorized emptying of barrel contents. And this last one is a new one. It's actually not in the resolution. It was based on departmental comment. The applicant will be responsible for replacing the sidewalk segments that are permanently stained if oil spills. Now, just to review this section on the encroachment permits, we've gone over the purpose, the review procedures, we're doing the town council in B2, the public hearing, and approval of the request shall be in the form of a resolution, which is at the beginning of your packet. You looked at the criteria and section D, the removal of the encroachment. I just wanted to make note of this. The town may require removal of all or part of any encroaching structures or use after 90 days written notice to the property owners. And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, Bexon.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I do have a question, and I need to go back into some of the documents rather than the presentation, so bear with me as I move forward, move through. So, in the staff report to the town of Silver City Council, one of the things that's already been discussed is that the United States Access Board Public Rided by Accessibility Guidelines currently awaiting adoption by the United States Department of Justice to become enforceable standards under Title II of the American Disabilities Act recommend minimum and continuous and unobstructed clear width of a pedestrian access route that shall be four feet exclusive of the width of the curb, and that walkways in pedestrian access routes that are less than five feet and clear width shall provide passing spaces at intervals of 200 feet maximum. So, that pedestrian access routes at a passing, at passing spaces shall be five feet wide for a distance of five feet. And then you had also presented information that one of the things would be six feet so that two wheelchairs could move side by side down the sidewalk. And as, already seeing that there are already impediments that are in the land use code, I mean, in the comprehensive code that we, in land use code that we'd like to remove through a series of procedures. So, my question is, is how likely do you feel it will be that, that there'll be an adoption of the new rule that would then require the night, within 90 days, removal of the, of that, if, if so approved, removal of, of that grease container?
Well, I was looking at the United States Access Board website, and it looked like their proposed guidelines had been on there from, since 2011.
Right.
So, it's been quite a while, but as far as I can see, and this is just speculation, that that's what they're proposing, and it could be, become a enforceable standard under ADA. But then usually, with my experience at the Department of Transportation, the actual rulemaking can take years, so it may be in the distant future.
But we do have in our comprehensive plan that, for that area, six foot wide?
Yes, and that's for new construction, and this is not a newly constructed street.
But the encroachment will be in construction?
Right.
Okay. And then, if you could, could you go back to the slide? Let's see, I've just turned it upside down all around, so let me see if I can find it now. Let's see, I think it's the second, the, the second slide. So, one more, back, that one. In that photograph, can you indicate exactly where the proposed encroachment is located? In the photograph rather than the plan?
There's a better photo of the next slide, actually, right here, that, show it. But according to the site plan, it's like this clump of weeds right here would be the location. And according to the application.
And it would be eight feet?
So, it'd be four feet in length and then a width of two feet protruding into the sidewalk. And that sidewalk right there, that location is of seven feet to the back of the curb. So, that would leave five feet of pedestrian access route.
Okay. I'll reserve the rest of my questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Any other questions for the town staff? Counsel, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I'm not exactly sure to whom to direct this, but my understanding is that we have now agreed that the applicant is going to be Open Window LLC. So, is Open Window LLC going to own the grease container? Is that, so that is, you know, so if it spills or if vandals come and set it on fire, that, that the person bearing responsibility for making things right is Open Window LLC?
Yes. The LLC will be, will have the burden of full liability for anything that happens.
That was my question, thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Counsel, Bexon?
Could you please state again the number of feet between, at least the current business? I know that there's alternate businesses to negotiate, what sorts of things they would have to negotiate to get around to where that proposed encroachment will be located?
On the door of Sweet C. Let's see if I can find that one again. Right here. They would travel 326 linear feet. There's a little jog right here from the sidewalk to the proposed location. Existing location, if they carry the barrels or buckets of oil, I believe is how they transport it, they come, come down the sidewalk, through the plaza, and to this location, it's 111 linear feet.
And then, if you could go back to the addition that you put in at the end of the thing about the, they'd be responsible for any oil spills, is that only at the encroachment? Or is that on the path to the encroachment as well?
That's a good question.
I mean, in terms of any public property on the path to the encroachment?
So, yes, that could be modified in the resolution to reflect any public property stated, so we can modify that.
Yeah, but currently, the staff recommendation only reads that it's at the encroachment itself. Correct?
Yeah, so, number three on the conditions, the applicant will be responsible for replacing any sidewalk segments that are permanently stained from oil spills.
Well, that doesn't really limit it to the encroachment. It's any sidewalk stains. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Katz, please present your case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel, men and women. A lot of you know me. I love downtown. I love everything about downtown. And our hope when we created the Hub Plaza was that it would be a town square, because we didn't have a town square. And, you know, that's why we have the fountain, that's why we don't have parking in there. We have people playing bocce ball and kids running around blowing bubbles, and we have now more restaurants than anything else in there, which I think is a good thing because with online buying, retail is suffering. And when people come, tourism is important to Silver City, and when people come, they're not spending money on art anymore because it's a luxury. And everybody eats. It's hard to buy a burger online. So, you know, I do have a big belief in green and recycling and stuff like that, and I will let Anthony tell you the particulars in a moment about, you know, how the grease barrels, and it's really an oil receptacle. A grease barrel just sounds dirty. I mean, not in a good way. So, you know, the, the, the point right now of where it is, and it's true, I mean, it looks perfect there, but a lot of gelato, I don't know if you guys know, after 11 years, Mitch closed it on the 24th, and Shevick and his partner will be opening a restaurant in there called Burgers and Brownies and Beers. Oh, my. And so, there's going to be another place that will need, and perhaps even the Tappas Treat Grill that is opening up, is going to need a place to put oil. Now, if you go anywhere near to that place, you have to be within this much of it to be able to smell it. And really, the garbage that, you know, the city cleans out of the restrooms, which I need to get those people, Alex, to not put the garbage in our hub garbage cans, smells way worse than the grease barrel. So, the point, the point that I'm trying to make is, is that the hoses, because all this oil is being recycled, it's all being made into diesel fuel and being recycled, so we don't pay for the, the grease, oil receptacle. Don't pay for that. Grant County Escavation does it, they pick it up once a week, and Anthony will explain all, you know, you can't set it on fire because there's so much water and bleach and, you know, cleaning stuff. The reason why grease receptacles or oil receptacles smell like the one at the, at the Nidermill is because they don't screen the food out. And that's what's, what smells like, as Tracy said, vomit, because it's the rotting food. And so, we don't have that. We're not going to have that. The reason why I'm applying, and I'm the applicant, and I sent out all those letters, and, you know, shockingly, all these people that wrote into Tracy, who, most of, a lot of whom I know, didn't contact me at all, and I said, contact me with concerns. So, I don't know. I don't know what that's about, but, you know, it's easier to complain to someone who's invisible, I guess. But I, I have a new site, which I made a whole movie for you guys about where the oil receptacles is going to be. There's four telephone poles on that block of Texas Street, on the east side. And Counsel Raymond Smith, thank you for bringing up the thing about getting the, you know, the handicapped things into the street cleared, because on Sixth Street, on Sixth Street and, and Texas, there is a telephone pole right in the middle, right in the middle of it. And that street, Texas Street on that side where we're proposing the, you know, oil receptacle B, has four telephone poles on it. And between the telephone poles and the street, not counting the curb, is always less than 44 inches. Between the oil receptacle and the curb is 55 inches. And it is blocked, let me see if I can, ooh, how do I get out of here? How do I get rid of you? Sorry, my lovely assistant, Dana White, is going to... I made a movie, but for some reason, your firewall will not allow us to download something that shows QuickTime. So, you're only going to get to see the, what, no color?
Sort of color.
Sort of, how do I get to the next one, Trace? Up here?
The arrows are down there, they're hard to see. I think you can scroll with the little thing.
Oh. No, I don't want to scroll. That's where it is now. Can you just get me to the next one? I'm sorry. No, that's not it. That's not it.
It's rotating.
That's just, you're just rotating.
Which way is behind the post?
See, we can't see because of the post.
There we go.
Okay. Now, are you on it? All I got to do is click?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that is, the electric box is right there, and that sticks out like 10 inches. Then there's the telephone pole, and then there's the gas meters, which stick out 19 inches. Where we're proposing putting it, where we're proposing putting it now is behind that telephone pole. So, it, the edge of it, give me the next one if you will, Tracy. Does that show the blue line?
Yes.
Okay. That's where we want to put it. And the video, if you can see John back there on his crutches, the video just showed people walking back and forth, two people across. But the telephone pole is the one that has, if you count where there's dirt around the pole and there's no cement, it's like only 39 inches of passage, but to the, the, you know, beginning of the oil receptacle, it's 55 inches. So, it's not encroaching even as much, and you can't go behind those meters, and, you know, that's really small. That's only 24 inches, which is why we can get the oil receptacle back there. And then, you're not going to cut right over and suck onto the wall because you got the gas meters. So, I believe that... Thank you. I believe that, that this is, you know, really not encroaching any more than what's already there. Every one of those telephone poles encroach more and make it harder for anyone who's handicapped to get by. So, that is why I don't think it's a, you know, it's a problem. The reason why I don't want to keep it on my property is because there's going to be, when Shevick puts his restaurant out there, he's going to need a little back area for outdoor seating. And the garbage cans will not be there, that were in Tracy's photo. And it's true, right now, it's perfect, you know, it's in between a tree and a bunch of garbage cans. But, you know, what we have is basically, somebody's going to come in with a giant hose that barely reaches and come all the way across through the money machine, through the murals, through the hub, you know, through the shrubbery, and suck the oil out once a week. You know, and I can't tell them when they have to come. I mean, I don't know. Anthony deals with them, you know, currently. But I am willing to take responsibility because I know that the way Anthony transports the oil, you know, after... the oil, you know, after cleaning it with bleach and adding water, because he's washed out the things, that's why, as Tracy testified, there was no smell at the Q's oil receptacle, because it's got degreaser, it's got cloths, and a lot of it is water, which is also the reason why you can't set it on fire. You know, I mean, unless you pour gasoline on the outside of it and light it on fire, but, you know, you could do that with the telephone pole. So, you know, I need to use that space for seating. So, all of that's gonna be cleared out. That tree probably won't even be there to make room for, you know, tables and stuff for, you know, the new businesses that are coming in. So, let's see, what else I got? Nava from Bear Creek Gerbs was really the only person that said anything to me, and what she said, she stopped me on the street, and she said, you know, "If I'm, if I feel positive about it, your letter, you know, about encroachment, do I have to say anything?" And I'd never done this before, so I didn't realize I should've had her call the city. I said, "Well, no, I'm just waiting for complaints." And I didn't get any. You know, so, she said, "I am thrilled that the Fry House is bringing down a demographic to downtown that we've never had." And when we created the hub, that was one of the things that we hoped for, is to bring, you know, the Hispanic community and the people that are on the other side of Pope and College there, to bring them downtown and have them reclaim ownership of downtown. And with the Fry House, that's happening. And I'm hoping that, you know, with more food places, that the hub will become sort of a tourist food court, and not just tourists, but, you know, a place, and that's why we didn't fill in all that, you know, area, and we put all those picnic tables and things like that, is so that people could enjoy the outdoors. I mean, we have sunshine 300 days out of the 365, according to New Mexico Magazine, and, you know, this, to me, it was my way and our way of giving back to this town that we love, to create this sort of plaza or town square. And that's why we have the benches and things like that, and that's why we have the fountain. So, anyway, I think that, for me to use that space, to have a tenant with an outdoor space over there, I can't really have it there, and it's also a hazard to bring those hoses through. It would be much easier to recycle it right on the street there. And I am, the other thing is, is on the other side, on the church side, there's even less. Over there, because of the telephone poles in the middle of the street, there's less than 42 inches for people to get by. So, with our 55, you know, we're looking good, I think. But I appreciate your, you know, listening to my thing, and I'm sure Anthony can answer all the technical questions. And I am totally willing to take responsibility for any grease spills on the city sidewalks. You know, I know he brings five gallons to the, of oil and water in a 55-gallon rolling barrel, and the chance of five gallons of water splashing out of a, you know, of oil, splashing out of a 55-gallon barrel, or somewhere between slim and none, at least it hasn't happened yet. Thank you.
Any other second questions?
Okay.
The measurements that you divided are actually inclusive of the curb, and everything in the town's comprehensive plan is exclusive of the curb. So, I guess, can you give me a good notion about when we are trying to remove obstacles for pedestrians, why at this point it would be a good idea to put a new one that will have to, may need to be removed within 90 days?
I, because it's not obstructing any, I don't know that it's a good idea, Counselor Madison, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, what is a good idea is promoting downtown.
I understand that, but we also have the land use code and a comprehensive plan that also promotes downtown, but also looks at the broader aspects of things. So, I think my concern is, is severalfold, is the measurement, your measurement differs from staff, because they're going according to measurement, the conditions in the comprehensive plan. And there is a plan to gradually remove those things, and then with the council, if the hearing board did approve this, you may be required at any time to remove that within 90 days. I mean, it's not a permanent...
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that.
And then...
And we would anchor it to the building, I forgot to say that, I'm sorry.
So, in the original application, it says grease smell needs to be away from restaurant openings. That's the reason for the request.
Mm-hmm.
In your statement, and I don't know who wrote what, it says, the receptacle will be emptied every week, and it is mandatory that the oil recyclers have easy access. Whereas the, is there some sort of code that mandates it?
Um, no, and maybe that was a bad choice of words on my part, Counselor Madison. I believe that the look of having oil recyclers come in and, you know, go right through the center of the hub, you know, while people are eating, mandates to me that it shouldn't be there. You know, I do understand what you're saying, bad choice of words on my part, evidently.
So, the original request, again, on the original application, was the grease smell needs to be away from the restaurant openings. So, how will you mitigate the grease smell that you're voting, that's been noted on the application as being an issue, it can't be near restaurant openings, if it's gonna be on the backside of the building, where they do have to carry it, and it's not necessarily carrying it in a 55, you know, drum, it's actual getting that material into the receptacle? How are you gonna mitigate the smell that's gonna be on the, out on the curb?
Um, you know, I'm gonna let Anthony speak to that, but I will say that, you know, you are referring back to the original application.
Correct.
And I understand that, but I hadn't, at that point, you know, I was doing this for Anthony, and then I kind of took it over. And since it's been over there, people have commented that, you know, I have asked, "Okay, you were over there, you went to the restroom, did you smell anything?" No. You know, the tenant that lives upstairs, there's residents upstairs right above it, has smelled nothing, and his windows are open all the time. And so, you know, that was my assumption that, you know, there was gonna be some grease smell, because Diane of Diane's Bakery, you know, called me and screamed about it not being over there on the side, which would be, you know, in that sort of gravel area. And so, she was saying that there was a smell, and really, I should've checked it out, because by the, after I submitted this, 'cause I wanted to get it in for this, you know, council meeting, I realized that unless you're this far from it, you can't smell it. You know, and you have to walk to.
So, right now, it's in the shade, correct?
Um, partial, partial. Part of the day it's in the shade, yes, just like it would be, you know, on Texas Street.
Perfect. I guess the next questions I would have would actually be directed to Mr. Quintana.
Okay.
Uh, Mr....
Counselor Madison?
Excuse me, Mr. Quintana, we're gonna move for a short recess, just for certain needs. Is there a motion? Yes. I move for a short recess.
We'll give a motion, a second, for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in recess. Call this hearing back to order. We're still with Janie Katz. Okay, we'll just wait. We have a couple more questions for her on her presentation. We're in session, we'll just give her just a moment. We just have a couple more questions for her. And she did not know that that was gonna be the case. Ms. Katz? We still have, we just had a couple more questions for you, for your presentation. Counselor Connaught?
My concern is with the 300-plus feet between where the Fry House is located and where you wanna locate this. I guess my concern is with spills. I know you said that it's pretty rare that that'll happen, but as a disabled person, I'm gonna use an example, a spill this size hitting my cane will cause a disastrous accident. So, I'm concerned with what your plan is gonna be for cleanup, how immediate it's gonna be if there is a cleanup. And also, I guess my question, those are for you, and with that question, I also have a question for Mr. Scaram, and that's who's gonna be liable if there is a fall on the sidewalk and it's due to a spill?
Just discussing that, that was a concern, and I was just thinking about how to get around that, and suggested to Tracy, who is going to make that as a condition, is that the liability insurance that's currently on the hub, be absolutely cover as primary insurer, the encroachment. So, even though it does project onto city-owned property, and I would want the Ms. Katz to agree to accomplish that by having, notifying her insurance company of that encroachment, and get specific, make sure that it is covered, and that would be the primary insurance.
I have, you know, I don't have any problem with that. Let me ask Mr. Brown, do you guys provide insurance for the bathrooms? Or is that all on me? 'Cause currently, the city rents bathrooms so that the city can have public restrooms, you know, in Silver City. And I think I just put in two new hand dryers to save the city money on towels. But I cover the entire insurance for public bathrooms right now.
Actually, the public's insurance is covered.
You insure them too?
Sure.
But, yeah, I have no problem insuring the piece of sidewalk by the, by the oil receptacle. You know, and I think in what you're saying, I think, you know, part of my video that you guys are never gonna get to see, was Jean Robert, who has a studio right there, who has, he's like seven feet tall and has, you know, crutches that come way out like this, and he walked by, he could walk by the, you know, the movie, part of the movie was him walking by there. And Anthony will explain to you why the grease things don't, you know, aren't gonna happen with him, and he can tell you why. Tracy mentioned the grease drip down on the sidewalk near his, and he fired those people, they were from Deming. And the people that he has now come all the way from Tucson once a week to get that oil, 'cause they want it, you know, and that's why they don't charge, you know, to pick it up, because they make money on it. And so, you know, they're not gonna be able to get there before business hours if they're in Tucson, and, you know, they have to come all that way. They just, they're not gonna be able to do that. But just a short thing, like when I had the tortilla in that same spot that the Fry House is in now, there was no requirement for grease thing or this or that, I don't know what happened to it, but I know that when Anthony took it over, his lines were plugged up, his water lines were plugged up. So evidently, a lot of it was getting flushed down the sewer lines. And when he had somebody come and blow it out, the cleanout is right there on the sidewalk. And he was all upset, I was out of town, he called me up and he said, "Look, I didn't do it, you know, we cleaned this out, there's all this white grease all over the sidewalk." But he said, "I have degreaser, I will take care of it, it'll look good, I can take care of it, I can remove it." And he was on it, by the time, I was out of town, by the time I got back, it was all taken care of, he said, "We'll do it right now." And he did, he got right on it. But when you transport five gallons of liquid in a 55-gallon drum, and you're rolling it along, I don't think that that's where the spill's gonna happen. It's not gonna slosh out, you know, it's just not. And, you know, he could take it all the way down to Q's that way, but that's a long way to go. But I think he's the one that, you know, can answer your questions better, for sure.
Just as an added question, maybe a clarifying question to what Counselor Madison was mentioning. Let's say that those power poles are removed, would you, as a contingency plan, you would be able to follow suit and remove this and come up with a different plan within 90 days of those poles being removed?
Um, I believe I could, you know, I would have to. Um, you know, that's just the way it goes. I'm betting that it's gonna take more than 90 days to remove those things, and it is really expensive to bury electrical wires. But, you know, and it tears up the streets, and blah, blah, blah. So, I'm putting my money on the fact that you guys aren't taking those telephone poles out anytime soon. But of course, I would be willing to remove it. And really, with the gas meters coming out 19 inches, and the electric meter coming out 12, there's, there are the electric boxes, even if it was 24 inches out, it's still gonna leave whatever it is, four feet, seven inches of sidewalk. But yes, in answer to your question, short answer, of course, I would remove it. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any witnesses in support of applicant's case? Mr. Quintana?
Hi, my name is Hafni Quintana, and I'm representing Q's Southern Beach Olive City DBA Fry House. I just wanted to come up here and say that with the future plans, with what's going on with Shevick's and the ponds that I have, where the grease trap is located right now, I should say, I call it grease trap, um, it would just affect because of, the company that I have currently that's doing the draining of the grease container, they do come from Tucson, like Ms. Katz said, and if we were to leave it where it is, there's gonna be hoses that go literally from, what is that, Bullard? Bullard, I always get confused with the streets, from Bullard all the way through that patio, and then through the courtyard, through where the patio is, you know, and then into that receptacle, where there's people out there eating, where they could slip and fall and stuff like that. And I understand, too, the church's concern with the smell and the oil and all that stuff, and I take that in great regard, because we try to clean that thing all the time. When you took the pictures of ours, even though it was the cleanest, that you took pictures... When you took the pictures of ours, even though it was the cleanest that you took pictures of, that was actually a bad day. We have our employees scrub those things at least three to four times a week. Oh, sorry, I'm talking to them. We have, we have our employees scrub them three or four times a week. And if anyone does spill, we write them up and we make them scrub it right there and there with degreaser, with bleach. And the reason why is, one, obviously for the safety, but two, just of the appearance. You know, your question, you asked if the grease trap was underneath the shade, you know, underneath the tree. And you probably asked that because you think the heat's going to make it stink. The one that we have there that you guys took pictures of at Q's is never underneath the shade. The fries actually come from the trash can that we have there, not the grease receptacle. And the only reason why is because there's more degreaser and bleach and all that stuff with what we clean our fryers out with. And not just that, we filter our fryers every single day, twice a day. And we get all the food and all the fries and the chicken wings and all that stuff. I mean, it happens, it's gross, but, you know, it happens in a fryer and we throw that, you know. And even with me myself, you know, we just try to work as clean as possible just because it reflects on your restaurant, it reflects on your establishment. So I don't know if y'all had any questions for me about the actual container itself or when they come, the people that take the grease, because it is recycled. And it's through Grant County excavation, but they go through a company out of Tucson. So that's why, you know, it's, I was using a company out of Deming. And like Ms. Katz said, I fired them because they were spilling grease all over my concrete. And it's just not attractive to have that.
Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple questions and one that might be more pertinent, Ms. Katz, but since you're currently the one that's using it, so, yeah. So, you know, one of the recommended conditions if it is approved is that the grease barrel must be secured so as not to be subject to vandalism such as tipping or unauthorized entry, unauthorized emptying of the barrel contents. So if you have somebody coming and doing this, are you going to have a lock on it? Are you going to make it so that it can't be tipped? Because right now, you're only asking for the two feet of the actual grease barrel itself. There is no superstructure around it that can be built.
Well, like Ms. Katz said, she could get it and bolt it on to her building, you know what I mean? So therefore, it can't be tipped over. And not just that, though, when there is liquid inside of that container, that container weighs probably close to about like 700, 800 pounds. The container itself right now weighs about 300 pounds, you know. And maybe some people could tip it over as it is when it's empty. But when it's empty, then nothing's going to come out of it. But when it's full, it's so heavy, you're going to have to have eight people, probably, I shouldn't say eight, but at least three, people try to tip it over. But if it's bolted on to the wall, it's going to take a lot of effort to unhook it. It can't be set on fire. And as far as a lock on top, we're actually required to have locks on top of them. I didn't do it just because we've never had a problem with anybody getting into it. There at Q's, I've never had anyone try to tip it over, you know what I mean? I don't want to jinx it now that I mention it. There's never been an occurrence like that. For the most part, I feel that there is a lot of stuff that goes on here in Silver, but we've never had that happen, you know, as far as vandalism's concerned. You can't set fire, like I said, to it. And we can't put a lock on it. I mean, then nobody could go and spill the oil out. The number one thing I asked, you know, the people from Grant County Excavations was, "Do you require us to have a lock?" And they, because of people dumping it over, they said, "We've never had anybody dump it over." Our problem is is that other competitors come and steal the oil to, because it's worth the money. And that's why they don't charge us a fee, you know, to come and pick that up because it's kind of even trade, I guess. I don't know, I really don't know the value of oil.
So right now, we're talking about you and Fry House. And I know that Shevick has been brought up and some other potential end users. The thing is, is I understand that you currently do things your way and you do it in such a way that it's sanitary, and we've heard that from Ms. Katz. But I guess this is almost one for Ms. Katz is, how can you ensure that any other future tenant, not the two gentlemen that are here right now, but any other future tenant is going to ensure that the same procedures are followed? Because you are talking about this as future end users and additional businesses using this. It'll be in their lease.
And I don't plan on leaving, just kidding.
May not plan.
I just want to state that, you know, I'm not trying to do anything to jeopardize. And I don't feel Ms. Katz is trying to do, or Shevick is trying to jeopardize the integrity of downtown. You know, I moved that business down there to try to make it more humming, more people going down there. I mean, even how Ms. Katz stated, you know, there's been, there's been complaints, but for the majority of the part, it's been more positive than negative. And I actually appreciate the church right behind us giving me permission to open that because I even made a statement, you know, with my mom under the first time I went in there to talk to Reverend Moore. They offered me a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and that's my favorite food. I was like, "Oh my God, this is heaven," you know. So it's, I would never do anything to jeopardize a congregation, you know, and to do anything like that. As a business owner, I try to respect everybody. And also try to respect my limits and my boundaries as far as what we do as a business. And everything that we try to do is just to, in my opinion, upgrade Silver City and to make it a better place for our younger generations as well as, you know, older generation. And I've noticed, you know, a lot, there is a lot more action going on in the hub. And it is, it's an exciting thing, you know, and I feel that this is necessary in order to make that grow even more, especially with the outdoor patio, you know, and which I hopefully plan on doing as well.
Which is not in play right now. I mean, I know we're talking about it, but it's not in the current application. I guess, for me, I mean, I just, I just want to, I appreciate what you're saying, but at the same time, please remember that there's comprehensive plan and there's other, there's a land use code, and those are things that I'm also examining. And so if anything, I will be asking potentially other questions related directly to that.
Yeah, and I, and I did, while I was there with Ms. Katz, was measuring out everything, you know, and I saw that it's taken up two, two feet of a seven-foot walkway area. And where that pole's located, you know, the poles say that the pole's on this side of me. Literally, a step and a half later are the gas meters. You know, that, it's like four feet because that thing's going to be fit almost perfectly with a little bit of space in between. So it's not going to shrug to anything else because people walking on the street aren't going to go in between the pole, there's not enough space. And people aren't going to go as soon as they get off of the pole and try to go right on the side because then there's the gas meters, you know. So it's not, it's not going to really take up any space if anything. I mean, it's a longer distance for me, so I should be saying, "No, I don't want to," you know what I mean? But for me, it's worth it to go walk that extra 150 feet so that way, other businesses could come in and also fulfill their plans of what they plan to do. You know, if anything, it is a burden on me. But I want to do it because I know that it's going to be a good thing for the hub and for downtown in the grand scheme of things. That's my, that's my opinion. And I don't think that it really comes out of the sidewalk that much because I walked. I walked and I did it, you know. I was there when she was recording everything and, you know, even I didn't, I didn't know the whole rule of having two wheelchairs, but even at that, two wheelchairs aren't going to be able to go side by side. Even if that grease barrel was there and they went around that thing, they're going to have to go an extra so many feet because then the gas meters are there. So anyways.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any more questions?
I have one question, thank you. Sir, is the size of this proposed encroached oil barrel larger than the one that is currently there? I mean, if you're looking, Ms. Caspi, you're looking to increased capacity, perhaps three restaurants using it. Is it, is it the right size for the proposed use and increased use?
They wanted to get me a smaller barrel because I don't use so much. And they want to come every, they wanted to come every three weeks because I make them come every week because it's not filled up all the way. I just have them come every week just because that's the way that we do things. So if they want our oil, they need to come when we, you know what I mean, say to. And if Shevick or let's say that new tapas place that's going in, that there, there's plenty of room. It's a, I believe it's a 500-gallon drum, so it holds, it holds a lot. The one that we have there at Q's, I believe is a 250-gallon. And even at that, that's a little bit big for Q's, but I do it so that way there is no spillage. That way there isn't anything draining out of the bucket. Or, you know, if they do miss, let's say they come in a week and a half.
The answer is yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I was just giving a long explanation.
The answer is, yes, it's big enough for capacity. The currently proposed one is large enough capacity to manage the increased business growth that's predicted for your place and for other places as well. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions for Mr. Quintana? Any other witnesses in support of applicant's case?
Hi, I'm Shevick Barnhart. And of course, some of you know me from Shevick and Company Restaurant. And I'm the one taking over the Lotte Gelato space and putting in a gourmet burger place with everything from vegetarian through fish to meat burgers. So it's going to be very, it's going to be upscale but very affordable. And I will have french fries and I will have a fryer and I will be generating some of the grease that goes in there. Now, what I've already done in the equipment that I have for different companies pricing out for me is a very specific system for cleaning the fryers, cleaning the fry oil, pumping the fry oil into the receptacle. And the system is both plug-in and battery run so that everything is as in, it is recycled, cleaned off on a daily basis, put back into the fryer via pumps. It has a container that holds all that grease in it when you are no longer doing it. And then that system, which is on wheels, gets wheeled to the receptacle and then gets pumped electrically, all of it in there. So that the spillage and the ability to need to lift anything up and potentially spill versus having a hose that goes directly into the top of it, it eliminates that whole issue entirely. And I'm getting that system because of the fact that it is efficient, it is extremely clean. And for those of you who have eaten at my restaurant, you know that we keep my restaurant very clean. Robert, my health inspector, I forget Robert's last name, tells me that I've got the second cleanest hood he's ever seen in the state of New Mexico. And that is a big deal, especially in this town. We are going to be using all the same degreases because they are very standard for it. And we're going to be using this particular system. I have no issue with Janie putting into my lease or future leases the fact that, you know, my being responsible for grease spills, my making sure that it's all done properly. I had the architect, Steven from Silver Architects, over today because we were talking about what modifications I need to do since he's doing the drawings. And I made him walk over to it and he was within eight inches before he could smell anything. There was a couple nearby who were eating 15 feet away, they didn't smell anything, they didn't even know it was there. And that's because Anthony is doing everything right to keep the smell down. The other thing is, is that because it is an ugly black, I will commit to, and I know Janie was thinking of painting it to the same building, but I will also commit one of my staff members who loves to do such thing to pretty it up with some flowers painted on it and everything else so that it doesn't become an eyesore in any way, shape or form. But the nice thing is, is that when it's handled properly, and Anthony has been handling it properly, there is really no odor. What I'm going to do with Anthony is, we're going to coordinate what day it's picked up so that the night before when we do clean it out, that they're going to pick it up, that we, that is the night since the oil went filtered properly lasts seven days in a fryer. That that night before is the night that both of us put the oil into this oil receptacle so that the next day or within so many hours, it is pumped out and there's no question about it. And again, the safety thing about setting the oil on fire, et cetera, with the water and the chemicals in there, it is pretty impossible to do. I think you would have to take some kind of huge military blowtorch at it to be able to get it to light realistically.
Very quickly, I think you're probably, the building that you have or that you're going to be leasing is closest to the current grease. And part of the criteria that we need to look for is the use, the ability to use the property by the owner. Is, do you have intentions of using the area, the space where the current grease is?
What most people don't know is, unless they've looked, is the back of, in his prep area that Lotte Gelato had that most of the people couldn't see, there were two huge garage doors that used to be the garage doors that when it was a dealership, they pulled the cars in too. Now, it is impossible for, to take the front steps going into Lotte Gelato and make that without encroaching onto the sidewalk handicapped accessible. But those garage doors are only about a foot over the level of the ground below that. My plans are to enclose those garage doors down, make a four-foot wide doorway in that area, have a ramp going down. That will not only be, that will be my handicapped access, but it will also be access for an area for people to dine outside just behind the restaurant. And yes, that will be, those garbage cans will be moved. And if we get to move the oil receptacle, that will be dining space outside for my restaurant.
Could you execute that, keeping those items there?
I would want to work with the architect and see, and I would want to, et cetera. But I would definitely not want the garbage cans there because those are going to draw flies. I would definitely want those moved because no one's going to want to eat with flies around. And my biggest concern is the same concern as everyone else since the company's coming from out of town and we don't know when they're going to arrive during the day, is them pulling hoses if they can park in an area close enough to do it right through where people are dining.
You just made a comment that's similar to Anthony's. And I just want to be clear, being two different professionals in the same industry, you just mentioned that the trash cans create more of a fly nuisance than the grease traps?
Yes, it's true.
And is that common across the industry?
Definitely. And it's even with sealed bags and washing out your garbage receptacles on a regular basis. Flies have a very unique ability to smell food that is rotting before it's picked up. And if I remember right, this distance is nearly 30 yards that they can smell rotting food. So trash, even when the bin is closed, their sense of smell is outrageously good.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Shevick? Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. So the intention is to build out where the trash cans are currently located and the receptacle is currently located, which is actually right there near the bathroom.
Yes, and we're going to, we're going to be putting some dining area... Yes, and, and we're going to, we're going to be putting some dining area in that area there plus a ramp so that the handicapped people will be able to get towards those public bathrooms if they need it as well. And that's going to go in that area as well.
It sort of begs the question that it's not pertinent, which is where the trash can's going to go?
Um, well, I have a place inside the restaurant that I'm going to keep them sealed away from the public and then I'm going to bring them out for daily pickup every single day of the week that there is pickup.
Okay, so these are your trash cans all the way?
Yeah, we're talking about the trash cans that are for the restaurant itself.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that daily pickup.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, uh, Counselor Cantona?
I have a question for him. Yes, probably Ms. Katz.
Okay, she, she.
Um, actually, it's something you mentioned, Mr. Shevick, um, made me think of traffic. When the truck comes to empty the, the grease, the oil container, exactly where's it going to park? Because on Texas Street, there's, usually people park on both sides of the street so there's only room for one car to go through. So are you going to be blocking traffic once a week or?
I, I honestly don't know because I don't know how big the truck is. I have not dealt with them and I don't know what time of day they come and quite honestly, I hardly ever use this street so I don't really know the traffic patterns on it, um, to be very honest.
Counselor, could you answer that or help try to answer that?
They usually come, they usually get either on Friday, Saturday or Sunday, that's when they usually come. They're going to be blocking the street just like they would on Bullard. You know, if they're, they have to park there probably for like 15, 20 minutes in order to pump. So that's on the main street, you know, so I can imagine the people running there, driving down Bullard, which is one of the main streets. It might not even take that long, to be honest with you. I've never sat there and timed them. I just see them when they, when they pull up. But I know that it's not necessarily, it's, the majority of the time they do come on Saturdays to pump because I know that they come, leave Phoenix usually either Friday, Friday afternoon or Friday late night and then they come and they do it on Saturday. Saturday usually morning or midday, so, but I know that they park, they have to park on Bullard right now and pump all the grease. So they're, they're just parking in the middle of the street because even with us, we try to park away from any of those parking spots just so that way that there's parking available or if there's any parking available, um, on the streets. But yeah, I don't know if that, that's your idea.
Counselor Madison?
So, um, if it comes Saturday morning, it would impact the church?
On Saturday morning?
Yes.
Or Sunday morning?
No, there was a statement that was already made that they, um, hold a, um, actually, I can't remember who made it, that they hold a, a garage sale.
On Sat, every Saturday morning?
Not every Saturday morning, but I, I can't remember what it is. I'm actually a church member and I have to tell you, I have not heard any of this from any of the church folks, so, because I haven't gone for a long time.
Well, it wouldn't.
So, I just want to make it looking clear, no one has talked to me since I've just been here.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact them, I mean, they're still going to be able to park. I mean, and they're not going to get, they're not going to get grease or anything like that anywhere. It's, it's not going to impact them any more than it would be impact people trying to park on Bullard, trying to go to the everyday businesses throughout downtown, you know?
So that's a one-way street. That's not a two-way street that's behind that business, you business.
Uh huh.
And if cars are parked on both sides, as was recently stated, you can only get one car down. So if there are cars parked for any event.
Yeah.
At another, it's the church, it's not a business.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
But they will not be able to go anywhere around where the...
If they come exactly, I mean, as the church, if it's like perfect timing when people are trying to park, when the church is trying to hold their event, I mean, me seeing that happen probably nine out of 10 times, it's not going to happen. But there, I guess there is always the what ifs, but it's, it's not going to, I'm sure it's not going to ruin their, their garage sale that they, that they host on Saturdays.
Well, I, I guess another question that might be more pertinent is the, uh, accessibility for fire, any, any emergency, um, when the street is, is, is blocked and it's a one-way, it's a one-way street and you've got cars on both sides. How quickly can they pull out to?
They would just have to put up their hose and get out, but I mean, it would be the same as if it was on Bullard because there's oncoming traffic on both sides. So if they were parked there, parked on one side of Bullard, parked there trying to pump the oil and there was no parking on the street, but then you have other cars going north, it's the same issue except actually where?
Really?
You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's not quite because it's a one-way street and it's very narrow, but, but no, I was just trying to figure out if they could, you mean?
Yeah, no, they would be able to move, they'd be able to move fast.
That helps, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Any?
Any other questions? Any other witnesses in support of applicant's case? Please remain available for further questions, um, by the hearing board, staff or by opponents to the application. Any witnesses in opposition to this case? Uh, Mr. Berry?
Hello, I'm, uh, David Berry. I live at 511 North Bullard Street in the old Isaac Cohen home. I've lived there for approximately 40 years and I've been conducting business as Homestead Mining Company, uh, for close to 40 years on Bullard Street also. Um, I was instrumental in getting the historic district in. Uh, I've worked very hard to improve our community and the downtown. I'm opposed to this in the sense that it is not in the spirit initially of the historic district. We don't want to start setting precedence of changing things as in the sense of allowing grease, grease traps, things of this on city property. There is a system in place right now that's working. Their private business, their venue is to make a profit, but their private business, everything I've heard so far does not really show an actual need to move what they have. What we have here is not a need, but this is purely for convenience. The city's not in the business of providing convenience for a business in this type of a situation. I'm concerned of the 300 and some feet coming around, there is no guarantee that there won't be spills, there is no guarantee that there won't be stench, there's no guarantee that there won't be vomit. I've been around grease traps before. There's cockroaches, there's, um, rodents and skunks. And it only takes one spill, as much as everyone is promising the sun and the moon and the stars about how it's going to work, we all know in the real life, it doesn't work that way. You've got to look at the worst possible scenario and that's probably what's going to happen. I don't want to see my downtown altered into a point where other people are going to say, oh, this is a precedent. Look, they can do that. This is not so much an encroachment request, they're requesting more, these are like variance requests, variances to the various ordinances that the city has already stated. The, all of these things, this is not an encroachment, this is a variance request for travel around on public conveyance and this is not correct. This is not an appropriate use of city space when there is private space available. Um, if a business has provided an appropriate due diligence and researched the appropriate needs and the, of businesses and appropriate uses for facilities, then they should take into consideration all of these things. Now, Shevick is saying, yes, he's taking into consideration a lot of these things, but I don't see a need for all of these other businesses when there is an appropriate solution being used right now. We have a nice facility there and I'm not going to knock them whatsoever, it's a very nice facility. However, the various businesses coming in have to understand what is doable and what is not. And I don't think that placing a grease container on city property on a sidewalk in the historic district is at all appropriate. It is not what we envisioned when we put the historic district together. It's not what long-term we envision for the direction of downtown. We're trying to clean and consolidate garbage up around businesses and things of this nature. I would hope that you as the mayor and as the counselors will deny this request. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Berry? Thank you. Any witnesses, any other witnesses in opposition to this case?
Thank you, I'm Frances Foskis and I'm a member of the Vestry of the Episcopal Church, that's the governing body of the church. And I very much, um, congratulate Mr. Cantona and Ms. Katz for all their endeavors and the accomplishments they've done downtown. All of us enjoy it and we appreciate it. But I really request of the council to carefully consider the request for the grease barrel on Texas Street. It's right across from the front of our beloved church. We have one of the most beautiful and oldest churches in Silver City and our congregation parks right there every Sunday and on other days when we get together. And I would really appreciate that you carefully consider the recommendations of your expert staff in the city that it not be granted. Uh, I'm listening to what everybody is saying and my thought is, can the five gallons of discarded oil be carried down to Q's, which is what, maybe three blocks away, carried down to that container there?
It's four, five gallons, we just do five gallons at a time.
Okay, five gallons at a time.
And then do that, uh, you are allowed to ask questions of prior, uh, could you please come up and answer that question?
Yeah. It's actually more than five gallons, it's just five gallons at a time because each one of the, each one of our fryers, which we're in place, we have four fryers, so there's 20 gallons, but that's not including the water. And I did it once and I'll say this much, uh, just carrying it from the distance from there to the behind would be a lot and we did it before we got that grease trap and that's something that, that's, it's just kind of crazy to be walking like two miles just to throw, it's about a mile, a mile to, to empty grease. That's just me, that's a lot, especially, I mean, you know what I mean? And I have to have two guys, we have two guys right now, but that means that I'd have to even bring in two more guys while I have two guys there at the store to be throwing the... Well, it's five gallons, sir, but it's five gallons at a time in a 55 gallon drum so that way we don't spill any oil.
So, so that's, that's answered the question fairly directly, but to add to that, um, do we have a foot measurement to Q's? Has anybody, just to, just to get a, a more valid comparison would be to compare it by feet?
Yeah, I have no idea.
So, but it is, uh, you're just saying that it's a, it's a longer distance.
A way longer distance. It's at least, I mean, I don't know if it's a mile, but it's, it's close to a mile.
We don't know what it is.
Half a mile. Would any of you guys be willing to walk that?
Um, you answered the question.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, is there any questions for Frances? Any other witnesses?
My name is Lynn Taylor, I too am a member of the Vestry of the Church of the Good Shepherd. And, um, I don't like the idea of the grease trap being across the street and, um, I think we're getting a lot more parking up on Texas Street because of the fact that we have some good restaurants downtown, we have more foot traffic, so the parking is going to be tight. Uh, one suggestion, well, maybe not a suggestion, but an observation, the Buffalo Bar operated for years and put cones out front when their beer truck was coming. So perhaps when the grease truck is coming, cones could be put out so there would be a parking space for them to park and then pump the grease. Um, I'd also hate to see the precedent of when a new restaurant opens, needs a place to put their grease, is Texas Street the place that we're going to set up for that? The Buffalo Bar is vacant, maybe the, the main bar itself won't ever reopen. There's that big side building that was Cosgrove's, it was a hardware store, it would be a good size for a restaurant, but they're not going to have any place for a grease trap. And, uh, so there's another one on Texas Street that would, you know, we got a request, well, if our house got one, why can't we? Another, uh, concern I have, I worked for almost a year next door to Q's in the small little house there, uh, I was the tosser coordinator so that I was there quite a bit during the day and, um, there was a still and it did smell like vomit, it was rancid grease, not out of the grease trap, I think it went in the garbage somehow and it got dumped on the street. And it was weeks before the smell went away. And I called the city because it was in the street and asked if there would be some way to clean it up, but it never was. So I took the traffic of that busy corner to wear the grease away finally and it was quite a, quite a stench. So there is concern that if there are spills, they can rot, um, any overage that might splash over around the grease trap, that's the west side of that building, it's going to be heating up to, I don't know, what that block wall would heat up to, but you know, it's in full sun, we do get some hot days here, so there could be an issue. And I think since there, um, is a system in place that's working, it may not be ideal to all the business people, but it would keep the business, um, waste within the, the property doing the business. So I think that's all I have to say.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Any other witnesses in opposition to this case?
Well, you all are going to think that we're the Good She, Good Shepherd mafia, but my name is Sarah Boyett and I too serve on the Vestry of Good Shepherd Episcopal Church. Um, I imagine some, most of you know that, uh, Good Shepherd is probably the oldest church in Silver City, uh, built in 1892. We've tried very hard to keep the grounds of the building, you know, looking nice. Uh, just this past fall, we, we completely cleared out one of the, the flower beds that had gotten all weedy, uh, put down weed barrier, put down mulch and brought a bench around to make a little area for contemplation right there in front of the church. Um, I know a lot of people tend to think that a church is only used on Sunday mornings. Well, um, our church is used for two services on Sunday morning. We also have a Wednesday service and frequently we have weddings and funerals and other community events like the chamber singers. So it really concerns me and I'm just not at all convinced that despite what these good folks say, that this thing is not going to smell. I, I have a hunch that the noses have been out checking during relatively mild weather up till now, but when it gets to be June and 95 degrees outside and as Lynn pointed out, that wall is going to reflect heat, I just can't believe that there isn't going to be these, um, flies that were mentioned as having a really good sense of smell. I suspect that they will find the grease and, uh, I just have a few... And I just have a few questions in my mind as to how this basically seems to be going from a request for the benefit of the Fry House to a request for the benefit of Shevick. Basically, what I understood Janie Katz to say is, we don't want our customers inconvenienced or discomouted, if you will, to use an old-fashioned word, by the presence of oil being transported out of the central part. I would ask you, as representatives of our community, the whole community, to please balance the needs of, shall we say, the spiritual needs of the community, the needs of our church against the needs of a business. And I'm certainly all for businesses downtown, but people being spiritual food as well as restaurant food. And so I would therefore ask you to deny this request and perhaps see if the applicants could work out some other site. I'm curious if it's possible to have the grease barrel placed behind Mr. Shevick's restaurant.
That's the one that I have now. That's actually...
Mr. Shevick, would you mind coming up to the podium?
The problem with that is, behind my restaurant, I don't own that property. That property is owned by the Garden Center. So that would require them giving permission for it to be there because I don't have control of that property at all.
Thank you very much for hearing my comment.
Do you have any questions for this witness? Any other witnesses in opposition to this case?
And I look very close to the existing situation. There is a prevalent smell even before...
You're speaking into the microphone, please.
Pardon?
I'm speaking into the microphone.
I'm sorry. There's a significant smell even before the waste gets to the grease barrel. There's just a thump that covers many blocks downtown. I walk around. Ms. Katz said, why didn't we contact her directly? I have had personal dealings with Ms. Katz concerning another restaurant she owns, rented to someone, and has not been a good neighbor as far as waste. The flies stink. The trash barrels overflow with food waste. And I tried to work with her, and she just basically told me to get lost. I don't like the idea of Texas Street having a grease trap on it. It's uphill. How are they going to get stuff uphill? Is it going to be pumped up? That pump might get clogged every now and then. Two different people have been shot to death on Texas Street in the 25 years I've lived there. They talked about vandalizing it. We know often what people do to vandalize property. It's they shoot it, and that could happen. It's just an accident waiting to happen that I feel is not the city's responsibility. I feel like it is the private business owner's responsibility. I have a business downtown. I had to relocate the front door to my business because of an inability to work with the person who's asking for this permit now. So I had to move the door to my art gallery, which I would like to contradict. Ms. Katz' art is selling very well as common ground because of the smell of rotting food as clients came into my space. And I want to bring it up because she said no one contacted her. So thank you. I hope the request is denied.
Do you have any questions, this witness? Any other witnesses in opposition to this case? Continue.
Basically, I have one more question, and that is, of all the grease traps that were inspected, the storage units, were any of them on municipal property? Were they all located on private property? To the best of my knowledge, I have never seen a grease storage unit at any restaurant in this community located on municipal property. People are treading on some thin ice here, setting a potential precedent for the use of municipal property. Like I said earlier, this is not so much an encroachment, but more of a whole series of variance that are being requested in a sort of an end-run way. So I would seriously consider the legality of this, and once again, I request that you deny this. Thank you.
Would staff come up and answer that question?
No, none of the grease barrels that we were inspected were on public property. They were all on private property.
Besides those that were inspected, to add to that, is the city aware of any grease traps that encroach into Seaver?
I am not aware of any.
Counselor Madison?
I have a question for staff. One of the points that was made is there is not a water source near the proposed encroachment. Could you please explain to me why that is necessary? That a water source should be located near the encroachment?
So my point that I should have made was that a water source would aid in maintaining the grease barrel and cleaning it and making sure the appearance was attractive on a daily basis.
Is there any basic questions to any of the witnesses in opposition? One question, and I'll just open this up to any of the witnesses in opposition. The comments have been made that there is currently a system that is being used effectively. Now, the property owner and the tenants want to expand upon the use of that property. Do you have any other viable solutions for them to utilize that property without getting this encroachment? And I will open that up to any witness in opposition.
I'm going to say that that question is actually... Should be turned around. Do they have any viable way? Once again, they're wanting this for their convenience, not out of an absolute need. We should not be put on the spot and ask, do we have a way of fixing something? This is private business. They should deal with their problems appropriately prior to having to bring them to the city for relief. We are not the people that should be asked this. They should be asked this, and relief should not be granted by an encroachment or potentially tacit variances. Relief, if they want to come up with a system, half of them come up. This is the American way. This is business. And like I said, if you haven't done an appropriate due diligence on a property and its uses, and then you suddenly start spinning the wheels about, what am I going to do? Oh, a business has just left. I need to jump in here and find a renter in a hurry. What am I going to do? That's not my problem until they start stinking my neighborhood up. And I don't want my neighborhood to be stunk up. This is the historic district, and we've worked hard to make it nice, and I want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon? Counselor Madison?
My question is to staff. So in the staff report to the council, the opinion is quite clear. And at this rate, I know that when we began these proceedings and Ms. Katz became... Was substituted for Q's Bistro DBA as Fry House, that there is no change to... I want to ascertain that there is no change to the opinion that you rendered in this report to deny based on the... That's not made the comprehensive plan. It is not necessary for the... It is not the minimum necessary to make reasonable use of Alcorn's property, and the proposed encroachment, as presented in the application, could endanger the health, safety, or welfare of the community. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the decision that was determined by the... And I'm just going to reiterate it, so it'll be almost the same thing. Decision that was done by the community development director and his designee has not changed with the new... Persona to anything that's gone on. I mean, it really hasn't. This is... What you provided is exactly the decision that, in your opinion, that was rendered, right?
That's correct.
Any other witnesses in opposition? I'll let you on.
I would just like to point out that when Ms. Katz was asked, what would you do if you were required to move the grease barrel from Texas Street if, you know, the city decided to, you know, open that up? And her reply, if I recall correctly, was, well, we'd figure something out, or something to that effect, implying that they could find another alternative if they were forced to. So to me, that speaks pretty strongly that there are other alternatives. I think that they've come to the town of Silver City first rather than last. And I think by denying this request, that they would then look for alternatives and might well find something that would be more agreeable to all of us. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Katz, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and council people. As far as the historic district and keeping it beautiful, I feel like anyone who knows, you know, what I have invested personally and financially in the historic district knows that I love this town. And when I buy buildings or do anything with them, I fix them up. I make them better. You know, I make them not fall down. You know, when we first moved here, every... Almost all the buildings were empty, you know? And certainly, the ones that, you know, I purchased with the exception of the one on Kelly and Bullard were empty. And, you know, I am very much a fan of the church. When they came to me, when I first bought the Hub property, they came to me and wanted to hang a sign there because they weren't getting the visibility. People didn't know they were back there. I was like, sure. Hang a sign on the corner of my building on Bullard and Seventh to direct people back to your church. I have lots of friends that go to that church, you know? I am not trying to insult the church in any way. And, you know, when I said that I would, you know, figure something out, but I figured that it would take you guys longer to figure out how to get the telephone poles out than it was going to take me to figure it out, I will believe I have some time. You know, and maybe I'll have to, you know, hire a truck to come by. I don't know. I don't... You know, I'm trying to help downtown, and, you know, I actually understand why, you know, a lot of what these people are saying. But I don't feel like it's a bad location. I think it's an encroachment permit. It's not a smell permit, you know? And I think that there's not going to be an issue with the smell. And I certainly believe that the people that I run into are very, very concerned with downtown as well. Otherwise, they wouldn't believe in it enough to open businesses here. It costs a lot of money to open a restaurant here. And, you know, we have people that believe enough in downtown Silver City to do that, to start new businesses. And even though it really doesn't have anything to do with anything, as long as I have the podium, I will say that there's... Downtown has been dependent on people that are my age. You know, I was 50 when I came here. I'm 66 now. You know, my hope and Suzie's hope has been that youth of Silver City and Grant County will step up and start taking over downtown and the city and, you know, Emmeral and all the things that need to happen because, well, the people that have been doing it are all getting old. And so I'm thrilled and really proud to have Anthony doing what he's doing at the Hub. And, you know, I'm really sorry that people are upset, and I'm sorry that people had to bring personal stuff into this, but it's not personal, and I just really appreciate your guys' attention to this matter. And whatever you decide, of course, we will abide by. Thank you.
Does any member of this hearing board have any questions for any witnesses? Counselor Madison?
Ms. Katz? I'd asked this question before, and I'm going to ask it again in a different way. What answer can you give to me and to this hearing board that explains the need to add an additional impediment in the sidewalk that will not fulfill the goals of the comprehensive plan to gradually remove impediments?
Let me understand what you're saying. You want to know what reason I have for adding something else that would impede foot traffic or handicapped people going down Texas Street?
One of that.
Okay.
That does not fulfill the goal of the goals of the comprehensive plan, which I already reiterated, and I know that it had been presented by staff, to gradually remove impediments. You have stated that there are already things there, and you don't think it'll, you know, take a bit of time for us to remove them. But that's not what the comprehensive plan is about. It's not about time. It's that we are gradually wanting to remove these impediments. So why would I, as a member of this council and hearing board, approve another impediment that will need to be removed in the future?
I don't know why you would do it. I would hope that you would, you know, see it as something that can be removed a lot easier than the telephone poles. I don't feel like it's an impediment. I don't feel like it's blocking anything in the location where it is. And if I knew how to... If I could see how to work this thing, I could show you another thing, but I still don't know how to work it.
That's sufficient. We've seen it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision? How does the hearing board decide? Counselor Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure I do this properly, so hopefully I can get some assistance from the town attorney. I move to deny resolution number 2015-11, providing for the encroachment of a grease barrel owned by Q's Southern Bistro LLC DBA Fry House on the portion of Texas Street right of way, based on the following. The requested permit... One, the requested permit does not conform with the town's comprehensive plan. The barrel would add additional obstacles to the utility pole and gas meters that are already obstructed Texas Street's sidewalk. The town's specific goals and objectives under section 4-8, transportation and circulation, accessibility for the handicapped, compliance with ADA requirements of the comprehensive plan, is to keep, quote, sidewalks clear and free of all impediments, including traffic signs, utility poles, gas meters, mailboxes, and other items. The town should develop a program based on the adopted sidewalk regulations for the gradual removal of any such barriers and impediments, end quote. Adding an additional impediment in the sidewalk does not fulfill the goals of the comprehensive plan to gradually remove impediments. The potential for spilling the oil and not maintaining the oil container are insignificant, so it's not to be aligned with the comprehensive plan's community design improvements, as noted in section 3-... noted in Section 3-17, a pedestrian-friendly community, to provide an overall attractive, pleasant setting for foot traffic. The requested permit does not conform with the current Town and Silver City Land Use Code, if being held to the standard of new streets that are based on best practices for high pedestrian activity in areas like the historic downtown commercial district. With five feet of remaining sidewalk width that the encroachment were permitted, the sidewalk would meet, correct three-foot minimum standards for ADA accessibility, but would not meet the Land Use Code standard for non-local commercial streets to have sidewalks that are a minimum of six feet wide. A six-foot minimum width allows two wheelchair users to proceed side by side. Number two, the proposed encroachment, as presented in the application, could endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the community. As noted by co-enforcement and fire department staff, the possibility of vandalism, such as tipping the barrel into the sidewalk or street, could affect the safety of the community, possibly as an obstruction in the street, if not maintained properly or screened, a nuisance order inoffensive. The appearance could endanger the welfare of the community, both residences on the west side of Texas Street and visitor and citizen pedestrians on the sidewalk at the proposed location. And number three, the proposed encroachment is not the minimum necessary to make reasonable use of applicant's property. The current location of the barrel on their side of the Hub Plaza is more than appropriate due to its 10-feet separation from pedestrian access routes, proximity to water sources for cleaning, more publicly watched area to prevent vandalism, a less distance and less opportunity for spilling than the proposed location for the applicant to fill the barrel, visual screening behind a tree, and location beside trash cans and restrooms that are alike in use, as they may also be prone to producing odor. It is, it is the opinion of the council that the current location gives applicant more incentive for maintaining the grease barrel. Is that appropriate, Mr. Scabron, those findings?
I'm sorry.
Did I say it properly? I mean, I read them all out.
That's not the way the motion should have read. What you've done is you've, you've incorporated your findings and your reasons for your vote, which is not normal.
Okay, so should I separate?
What the motion, your motion, understanding is that I move to deny the encroachment permit based upon the recommendation of the town staff and based upon the testimony that I have heard.
One more time. I move to deny.
I, you say I?
I was wrong my first motion. Nobody seconded it anyway, so. I move to deny, and I have to state the resolution number, no?
I move to deny the application, because the application is what you're dealing with.
Okay, and we can deny the application.
For an encroachment permit.
For the encroachment permit.
Based upon staff recommendation.
Based upon staff recommendation.
And the testimony I have heard.
And the testimony I have heard.
That the, specifically that the.
Specifically that the.
That the applicant has failed to meet the three criteria necessary for the encroachment permit.
That specifically that the applicant has failed.
To meet the.
To meet the three criteria.
Necessary.
Necessary for the encroachment permit.
Yes.
Thank you.
You are.
Next time, I'll ask beforehand.
Counselor Ray?
I'll second that is stated.
We have a motion, a second, is read into the record. Does everybody understand what they're voting on?
Yes, denying the application.
Everybody's comfortable with the rest, with the motion that is, that was read into the record? And you got that down?
I will repeat it.
Please repeat it.
Counselor Madison moved to deny the application for an encroachment permit, based upon staff recommendation and the testimony she heard that specifically, that the applicant had failed to meet the three criteria necessary for the encroachment permit. I don't know if I got it quite right, but pretty close.
Let's close it up.
Mr. Scabron? We do not have the mention of resolution number, because there is no resolution, with a denial.
The denial does not require a resolution.
Correct.
The passage does.
Right. And there's no need to be more explicit in.
No, because the record.
Reflects the request, yes.
There has to be evidence to support findings. If you find that there's not, that the three criteria haven't been met, and someone was to examine this proceeding, there would be significant evidence to justify your position, as there would be enough evidence to justify the other side. As long as you're basing your findings on evidence, then it will stand.
That was presented.
Correct.
And that.
And the application is part of the record as well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this motion?
So a vote yes, a vote no.
Is the vote to deny?
To deny.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. Roll call.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Nay.
Let me drop these down.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. This public hearing is concluded. Next item on the agenda is under New Business, approval, disapproval of preliminary budget for fiscal year 2015 through 2016. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Council, what you guys have in front of you is actually the summary that is required to submit, the state's worksheets required, that is required. I'm tired now, too. I didn't say anything. Imagine you. These are the forms that are required to submit the budget for fiscal year 2015. There were no changes from the presentation that we made to you last week. There, except there was one, we captured a mistake, so the recreation center expenditures increased by $16,000 because we missed a, a FOIA that included the cost for the summer recreation providers. So that was included back into the budget. In this sheet, it does not include the 3% credit card fee. If you would like me to include that at this time, I will add what the projected revenue into it at this time. Any additions? Okay, so with the credit card revenue, it'll increase the general fund bottom line by $38,000. Okay? So that'll be the only change from what you have right here. Okay? And it doesn't require a resolution or anything for the preliminary. It really doesn't even require your approval, but I always would like to make sure that you guys are okay with what I'm submitting.
Any questions for Ms. Brown? I had entertained the motion. Counselor Madison?
I move to approve the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Amos Smith?
I second that motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2015-2016. No further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have, next item on the agenda is appointments to the cemetery board. We have two applications, one by Ryder South and the other by Jeffrey Feld. They are both currently on the board, and the chair would like to see them reappointed. And I plan on doing so if there is no objection.
No objection?
They are appointed. Counselor Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short break prior to, am I going to do this correctly or am I going to do this wrong?
What are you doing?
Moving into executive session, but I want a short break prior to then.
Can you say that I move to recess and reconvene? I move to recess and reconvene.
And I move, yeah. I move to recess and reconvene in an executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H, for the following reason. Number one, meetings pursuant to issuance, suspension, renewal, or revocation of a license, except that a hearing, I don't need the last part, do I? No, okay. Just for number one, meetings pertaining to issuance, suspension, renewal, or revocation of a license.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Amos Smith?
I second that motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second, to, as read into the record. All those in favor?
No, Sabine, roll call. I second the session.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll be starting the short recess and then moving into closed session. No, 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 no. I called the back door. No, no decisions were made. We only discussed items as read into, that we went into, we take this session for.
And I meant to do roll call.
Is there any question? Is there any discussion there?
No, but I meant to do roll call.
Motion to.
No, no, I.
Counselor Ray?
I. Happy to speak.
I know.
Nothing happened.
Well, I or no, it's true.
We're going back into open session.
Okay, we're going to roll call. Considering this.
I, I, nothing happened. We just talked about, we're back to open session. We already did that.
We just did, we just did the roll call, back in session.
I move to adjourn.
We are moving to a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.